Good afternoon, this is John Steen. I want to call to order the January 25th, 2021 meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, and begin with a roll call conducted by our General Counsel, Carolyn Schellman.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. I will mark you as President. Dr. Mackey?
President.
Mr. Kelly?
President.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Nuremberg? Mr. Steen, we do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Schellman. Let me cue Ivan.
Thank you Chair Steen, and good afternoon. My name is Ivan. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees thanks you for joining their regular January Board meeting by teleconference. The Board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad to be put in the queue to speak. A member of our staff will take your name, and when you hear Chair Steen say "your" name, your line will be open and you'll have about two minutes to speak. You'll have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining to speak, and for all others who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. I'll now turn the call back over to Chair Steen.
Thank you, Ivan. Let's move to Agenda Item 2, which is a safety message, and we'll begin with our Mayor, Ron Nuremberg.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much for allowing me just a moment. I won't go over the previous information given on Friday that hasn't changed, but I will say that where we are today appears to be on the verge of or in the middle of a peak of our current infection cycle. And that is a good thing, because if we can continue the rate at which we're vaccinating people and continue to get more vaccine into our community, it looks like we will start to see this pandemic put behind us. That being said, we still have quite a ways to go. We are now seeing the lagging indicators of a very difficult period that we've been in and continue to be in. We've now had multiple days of double-digit deaths recorded in our community. We anticipate that to continue for quite some time. Our hospitals are continuing to be close to maxed out and will be for quite some time. Probably over the next three to four weeks, we will experience the same level of surge that we've been in. But again, the good news being that we think we are at or near a peak of the total infections that we're begun to see during the surge. Really quickly, today we'll be updating our major progress and warning indicators that Metro Health gives us. We do anticipate that there'll probably be a slight decrease in our positivity rate, which is a good thing. We continue to see a large amount of testing being done in our community, but there has been a very slow descent started in our hospital rates. We don't know if that's a trend yet until we see that carry out over the next week, but we're remaining hopeful. The City Council continues to do its work to allocate resources aimed at relief of businesses as well as residents who are suffering during this pandemic. We did receive additional allocation from the federal government, which will be going towards emergency housing relief, as we also work to identify additional resources for small businesses that are that have been affected by the pandemic. So, all things are continuing to progress. San Antonio continues to have an extraordinary collaborative response to the pandemic, and we hope that the clouds start to lift here in 2021, and I'm confident that it will. So, with that, I'm happy to answer your questions, and I appreciate all the diligence of the Board and CPS to protect our family members here at CPS. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of your CPS Energy family, thank you for your leadership and your efforts to keep us safe during this pandemic. Let's move to Paula Gold Williams, our CEO, on her safety message.
Good afternoon, this is Paula, and thank you, Chair Steen, and the entire Board for the time to talk to you about the impacts that we see from COVID-19. We always pay attention to the Mayor's messages and the trends that he sees. We typically tend to align with the city trends. I will say, we've got some, use some additional context that would be helpful. You know, I recently, just on Friday, talked about the numbers. The numbers aren't that different than they were, of course, on Friday, but I do want to provide a bit more context. So, we are getting, we're at 396 positive cases inception to date. The interesting thing for us, as we are tracking this, we have a daily dashboard. The, since the last Board meeting, which was mid-December to today, so it was a, it was a much longer period. It was a period that extended about six weeks, but we almost saw our cases double from the previous trend for all the earlier months, just in that six-week period. So, you know, it's been concerning for us overall that the trend has been very impactful in terms of positivity. Our quarantine numbers have come down a bit. We're now at 268 cases, and we were in the 300 range for the past several weeks, and we have two people, again, still currently in the hospital. So, we are and continue to be concerned about this trend. I think I did focus on Friday that one of the challenges that we also have is that we're far down in the priority list in terms of critical and essential workers, and we by far respectfully want people who are in the priority list to get, you know, to be in the priority of where they are. We just have to be diligent enough to share with you that it is a stress on the organization to be further down, and again, only have 3,100, what I call superheroes, working every day to get the power on for a community of 2 million and also contributing to the state's reliability. We did see some, some positive trends in terms of more consideration for utility workers began to happen from the CDC and from the FERC, but those seem to be very conversational and have not necessarily translated to changes in the consideration. We think the biggest constraint, and we acknowledge it, is the fact that the vaccines are very limited in number. So even if we were on the list, then of course, if there's not enough to go around, then that is the bigger problem, and we know that the state is working on that and that the Mayor and the city officials are closely monitoring it. So we do believe it's a true supply issue. But assuming you have enough vaccines to go around, we just want to continue to tell you that we want to, we want to make sure that our particularly frontline workers get the prioritization ultimately that they need. And again, we look forward to a day when this pandemic will be over, but I think we all realize that this is a new dawn, and that pandemics come, will come again, and so we just want to be better positioned in the future to just ensure that our frontline employees are well taken care of and considered. In the meantime, we continue to stress mask, social distancing, careful, being careful at home as much as we can, but when we saw the number of cases almost doubled in the six-week period versus almost an entire year, we still, you know, realize that that is kind of an uphill battle all the way through. So, I will also stop to take any questions that you may have.
I just want to say that our CEOs do an extraordinary job. You'll, the people listening will see that from the items on the agenda today, there are lots, just lots of challenging issues before CPS Energy, and all of this is overlaid by dealing with the pandemic. And Ms. Gold Williams, you couldn't have done a better job leading us through it, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's move to the invocation, and that's from Ms. Amelia Batters.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Lord, we come before you today and give you honor and praise. Thank you for every gift that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather today. We ask for your hand of blessing on today's meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We ask that the discussions held today and the decisions made today be guided by your wisdom, and that our words and actions today would bring honor to you. Provide us the grace to navigate the challenges, the challenges before us and to serve our customers well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Batters, beautiful prayer. Let's move to Agenda Item 4, and that's Public Comment, and this is where we provide an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we've done for in-person Board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, so we may hear their comments. They may only address the Board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. So for this meeting, we have one registered speaker who has two minutes to speak. He'll hear a chime when 10 seconds remain, letting him know that he should wrap up his comments. As a reminder, our speaker should state his first and last name, what organization or group he represents, if applicable, and indicate the Agenda Item number he's going to speak about. So our only speaker today is Richard Pettis. Mr. Pettis?
Good afternoon, Chairman Steen and members of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. My name is Richard Pettis, and I am the President of a small San Antonio-based not-for-profit called the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to take a moment to first thank you for your service as a citizen, or as citizens, providing policy direction as members of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. You continue to focus on open and transparent governance, which makes all the difference in the world, and I think really is a special thing for us to be able to look to as you all make important decisions that affect the lives of countless citizens and businesses in San Antonio. Second thing, I want to reiterate the San Antonio businesses' opinion of making sure that as you go through the process for developing and appointing individuals to serve on the Rate Advisory Committee, that it is a varied group of professionals with all manner of experiences such as banking, engineering, finance, construction, land development, and even environmental concerns. Number two, look forward to the presentation that'll occur in a little bit regarding the generation and resource planning. I believe that this will be foundational information that this new Rate Advisory Committee then can then use as they move forward to provide you all with recommendations so that you can make good decisions. And finally, I want to just let you know that the San Antonio business community is so pleased with the work of your CEO, Paula Gold Williams. I've not heard a single person in the San Antonio business community who would have any decision other than to continue with her good work through a contract extension and appreciation of her good work through your evaluation process. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I say thank you, and I bid you all a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Pettish. Let's move to Agenda Item 5, which is the CEO's Report, and this features a generation planning update from Dr. Chris Yuckster. Before we move to this item, are there any trustees want to comment? All right, hearing no, hearing no feedback on that, then we would move, and then you're going to initiate it, Ms. Gold Williams, and then you're going to turn it over to Chris Yuckster. Is that how this is going to go forward?
Yes, sir. I definitely will. I do want to talk generally about today's agenda, and then I'm going to have a presentation myself to talk about something that we are proposing to pursue today and want to, want to have additional conversations on. And then it will also lead to Chris, Dr. Yuckster, talking more about the, a potential dialogue in the community about what our generation planning could look like, and these are all possibilities. But the first thing I want to do is just go a bit over the agenda. You know, ultimately, we will hear today in Section 6 about the financials, and we were able to get a bit of a briefing to the Audit and Committee. We're doing well. We have definitely, again, continued to tighten our, our bootstraps and costs. I think we're headed to more of a break-even year. Now, these are just the results through December. What typically happens is December is a low-revenue month because the temperatures are typical mild, more mild, so we actually bring in more costs, and we actually lose some of the momentum we get through December. We lose it a bit in January. But we kind of believe that ultimately, we're going to, we're going to forecast, you know, somewhere close to break-even, maybe a little higher, maybe a little lower overall. And I think the biggest thing you're going to see is we, we do have pressure on our receivables. Our receivables, we do not have disconnects, disconnections going on. They've been suspended through March, and so we have a continued increase in receivables every month, which in turn, when your, when your receivables increase, it also means that your bad debt is in fact potentially increasing. Gary and his team have worked hard to increase the reserve substantially, but I do think that is probably one more challenging financial statements as we're trying to work with our customers. Now, we continue to do outbound calling. We continue to help them with the programs and the resources that we have. We did get some COVID money. We did not get that much COVID money from, from anyone. We did have some nice partnership with the City of San Antonio and with Fair County, but there is, I think, tremendously more need than there were resources allocated. We did move some money from a fund that wasn't really, it was sitting there, and the corpus was supposed to be available into the long term, but what was more important was to move it to the REIT fund where people could actually get help. We've also had what we call CPS Energy Angels. We have people who called, particularly around the holidays, and they wanted to help their neighbors and friends with bills. We're going to do some more promotion around that to see if people want to do some specific work as well as general work to be helpful. And, and some of those, again, were individuals, some retired, one of our retirees made a substantial contribution. We also have just general organizations, some of our partners, I try on others, have made contributions to try to be helpful. I think we've seen hundreds of thousands. I think that the demand's in tens of millions. So we're going to have to continue to watch this. If you couple this with the fact that we're stressed under COVID and the community's stressed under COVID and unemployment is up, we do not see an immediate pathway to start disconnects again, and so again, we're just going to have to keep working on it proactively and keep you posted, but that's probably one of the biggest stresses that we will have in ending fiscal 2021. That's going to end at the end of the month, and then it'll, it'll follow us into the new fiscal year, and we'll have to, we'll have to watch that carefully. We're also going to have a cost savings review. You're going to, you're going to see again why it's so important that we pay attention to our debt costs and how investors are attracted to our debt. When investors are attracted to our debt, we get lower interest rates, and so you're going to get a recap of the benefits that went straight to the bottom line from the financing transactions that we did last year, and why we continue to look for opportunities to refinance our debt. We are going to have a procurement review. You have a presentation. The Board has been extremely helpful in terms of supporting the increased activity that we've been seeing on the gas, natural gas side of the house. We have customers that demand and expect to have natural gas. We've seen a lot more work in this space. Back in fall, September timeframe, the Board approved a new, much more substantial procurement of $120 million over a three-year contract. What we found, though, when we got to the end of the earlier contract, is there were some outstanding invoices, and when we look at those outstanding invoices, what we found is that when we were running all of these periods of contracts together, we were, we were leaving value on the older contracts, and we were not applying the invoices to each prior contract correctly. We now have had audits help us, we've had legal look at it, we've had supply chain look at it. We know that what we need to do is go in and reapply the invoices to the correct contracts and purchase orders, and then when we do that, it will leave about 1.4, you know, $5 million that we have in outstanding remaining bills. We revalidated each one of those bills. There's a slight tweaking, but they are materially accurate, and we just want to get the Board's approval because we have cleanup to do on all those purchase orders. We take responsibility for cleaning that up, getting it done, but your approval is critical for us to move forward, and now our team has taken new measures to increase the controls around that and to make sure that we don't get off and applying the invoices to purchase orders again. Additional on today's agenda, we, we ultimately have Board officers. The, you know, we, I think that the Board looks at that every month, and that there's going to be a report from Trustee Kelly about, from the nominations committee, and then I believe we're going to have a change of officers and update to that. As one of our, one of our items, the other thing is, my contract is expiring at the end of this month, so that is respectfully on the agenda for the Board's consideration. We do need to, and then another item, item number 13, we do need to update some investment managers that are associated with our decommissioning trust. We did provide a presentation to the Audit and Finance Committee members recently, and we have looked and found that we have some non-performing, low-performing investment managers, and it's time to switch them out. A lot of the things that we've learned in terms of how we're looking at investments and investment manager performance, also beneficial from the members of the Audit and Finance Committee, members of the Board, have given us a lot of great insights, and we're applying those same suggestions on all of the trusts and activities that we have. So, you know, we are needing to clean that up, and that, because it applies to the decommissioning trust, raises to the level of the Board to ultimately approve us switching them out. We have a benefit funding expense per our statement of governance relative to our ongoing administrative committee work that relate to the pension plan in particular. There is a requirement that the Board approve the expense and the funding that go along with the trust. Normally, we include this in the presentation to, on the budget, but we're taking another month or so on the budget because of the challenges we're having in the receivables, and that we're really trying to get that part right, kind of look at the forecast much more closely. However, per the statement of governance requirements, we need to get the approval from, from you about making sure that we are on top of the expense and the funding. I don't know of any significant challenges with that. We did, again, cover this material with the Audit and Finance Committee, and I think successfully answered their questions. You are going to get a, an update on the smart data sharing principles, and that is a vote item. We've got a lot of great input from Trustee Gonzalez about, you know, the way to look at technology and innovation and to think again about protecting the privacy of customers and, and making sure that as we try to, to share more information relative to doing some good things for customers on smart cities and other things, that we stay diligent. So we appreciate Trustee Gonzalez's input and guidance on that, additional guidance as well from Vice Chair Dr. Mackey, who, who joins her in that committee. So I think we've hit all of the requirements. We've gotten the agreement updated. We still have the right protocols to protect customer information, and it's agreed upon by all the other members, but we, we will be asking for the Board's approval so that we can formally enter those agreements with the city and other municipalities in San Antonio. And then, we had a meeting on, on Friday. Trustee Gonzalez is serving as the Board Liaison. I think that was an effective meeting for all the Board members on Friday. We are also just generally having an update because we do know that the public is paying attention to items like this, and so we wanted to make sure that if they missed the meeting on Friday, they could have an update about, you know, how that's feeding. That is the agenda. Okay, so I'm going to move on to my presentation material.
Ms. Gold, before you go on, has Ms. Gonzalez joined the call?
I thought I heard her. Yes, I've been on the call all along.
Oh, good. Maybe, maybe it would help the person taking the minutes. About when did you join us?
Actually, before the meeting started, when she did roll call.
Oh, you, you were there from the beginning. You just didn't, you weren't picked up on the roll call?
I thought I was. I thought Carolyn heard me.
Oh, no. Okay, no.
I heard her come in. I think we just missed.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can refer to the actual dial-in, my phone number records, but I was on there on the onset.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No, I understand. That's fine. No problem.
Okay. Well, I want to go to my, my presentation, and I'm going to go to Slide 2. And basically, I want to, you're going to see some of the high-level materials that you've seen before, but you're also going to see some thoughts about some more detailed information that we want to share with the community. We look forward to being able to do that. Going to start out talking about the value pillars and our flexible path strategy, and again, that contends to guide how we approach our current operations and how we begin to think about solutions in the future. We're going to talk about our resource planning. What, resource planning is a technical utility term, and what it, you know, we have a ton of resources all over the place, but when we're talking about this, we're typically thinking about all of our generating resources of power, primarily the ones that we own, but it also will include the ones that we lease through PPAs, and there will also be an element of our energy efficiency and conservation program, because the way that we can control the consumption of energy, it guides how much we actually need to produce. So all of that is considered in our resource planning. So we, we created a new one before. We do one every several years. We don't necessarily update everything in, in the plan every year, but we've done a lot of work around also the Flex Power Bundle, and we decided that this would be a good time to share more about what we're doing and why. And I think what's unique and good about what we've done here is we're looking at, again, comprehensively, we're looking at other strategies, we're deploying the Flex Power Bundle, but we're also translating and we're showing some scenarios of possibilities, whether we keep on our current course, which is keep making changes, the more flexible path, the way that we have, being really careful in terms of bill affordability and reliability as we do it, you know, two of our pillars that are always ranked tight with customers. But we're also taking it and looking at bill impact in more detail. And I've talked to you all about bill impact probably three or four times in, at the end of 2020. Each month, I would talk and show a bit, and I'd show slides. So in particular, I, I had the cost of the Flex Power Bundle is probably currently, we're not sure, but currently, we think it's in the range of three, $2 to $5. We talked about step, you know, we've been asked by many, not many, a small group of people, and the public about, you know, supersizing step. There's a significant potential cost of that if we try to double the size of step, and right now, we're not sure that's the best focus. And then there was an ask about can we move to renewables and energy battery storage, and our general estimates of that have been about $12 more on average. What we did with the flexible path resource plan was look at those scenarios in addition to our base case. And now, instead of just having the average impact, you can actually see the annual average impacts in many years. Several of those costs in the transition can be much more expensive. And again, it speaks to the comment about velocity. So we're going to have bill impacts. We did, we have looked more at the implication to our dedicated employees who are amazing, and they've made the transition when we closed the DLE units, and we have to be really careful. We don't want frontline people displaced, let go, not have a job. Our commitment is to keep them working. We are looking at the fact, and we'll talk a bit about the new administration and what we see from them, and then we're going to have to continue to focus on innovation, and then I'm going to summarize kind of where I think we are. So, a big high-level view, I'm going to move it on to Slide 5. So the pillars, I think, with, with Board guidance, we're able to develop those pillars, and they are working very well to help us always think about things in balance, to make sure, we do, we do understand that customers really want us to focus on reliability and affordability. We don't want outages like, like other small We don't want outages like other small utilities and cities have seen in Texas. We don't want some of the challenges that we've seen in California. We want to be very, very careful. Yes, we understand there are other contributors that happen, but if, but what we believe is if you're not very careful with the physics and the implementation of new technology, you can increase risk in those two areas. That said, everything we do goes through all the pillars, and then we make sure that we're maintaining financial stability. I mean, they guide us in everything that we do. On slide six, you know, highlights again, we have to be risk smart. We have to make sure that we're, again, preventing rolling blackouts and preventing bill shock. Again, sometimes when you implement certain policies, strategies, initiatives, and you're not watching all of those things, then you can increase the risk. On slide seven, again, we want to stress to the community, we always get a question. We talked to the media this morning and about kind of our new flexible path resource plan. And we talked about, we still haven't had but one increase in the last 10 years, and that lasted almost six years ago. Because we're prudent, and we're careful, and we're balanced, and we know that we don't want to cause undue pressure on the community. On slide eight, you know, oftentimes, people, you know, ask questions about what are we going to do next? We always think it's important to tell people what we have done because we are making tremendous progress in San Antonio. So, again, we've been in wind for over 20 years. We're number one in solar in the state. The flexible path strategy, I'll show you a little highlight, is well-regarded with the credit rating agencies. We have made plans, and we did close two coal units very successfully, and moved that we're using natural gas and natural gas plant to help us get there. We do, the flexible path does allow us to make significant changes by 2040. And the board has overall supported this trajectory and endorsed the cap. And again, the step program under all of it, again, helps us have very managed control overall. Slide nine is a slide that you haven't seen in a while. It is in our sustainability report. And, you know, the overall gist of it is total generation is the dark line, the dark black line, that shows that total generation since 1980 has, of course, increased, population has increased, the economy has improved. I mean, we're in a tough spot now, but overall, San Antonio and Texas have done well. If you look at the blue line, at the same time, our carbon intensity has gone down. That's an amazing accomplishment with a growing city to date. Again, it was because our predecessors and this current team think constantly about how to make changes that are smooth. Let me get to slide 10. Just want to highlight again our flexible path and kind of what we've seen over the past several years. The flexible path strategy was developed in 2017. In 2018, it was already in play, but it did align and support some of the improvements on the environmental responsibility side when we closed the deal units. Then, the board endorsed the cap in 2019. 2020 was tough because no matter what we were trying to do, everything was kind of, took a backseat to COVID-19, and we just put our people-first philosophy forward to focus on customers, the community, and our employees. We did make progress, though, to do an RSI on the flex power bundle. And then, we did it in the summer, and then we released the formal RFP in December. And interestingly, that closes on February 1. And we are getting lots of indications that the popularity of the RFP is more, we're seeing more interest, at least in people who are registered and plan to, to send a response in than what we saw in the RFI. So, it was still very encouraging, even though there were tremendous challenges. And here we are in 2021, and we want to talk to the community about our resource plan through the flexible path and get people a sense of what the sensitivities are, what the, what the things are that we look at as we try to plan for the future. This is a really, really big deal. Ultimately, I know that the board, we've been up to the wire on this, and we've been talking about it. The board has, specific board members have asked, what more can we give to help the community? And we've been telling you that we were working on it and working on it. We worked on it all the way up through the weekend. It is hot off the press, but you have not had a chance to look at it. So, I know that there may be questions, and there may be requests for a bit more time for the board to get familiar. That said, whatever we do today, we're not asking the board to make any decision. We just, we feel confident that what we've put together is a good document to have a conversation and also gives us an ability to pull some more information in for the board to consider because there's multiple pathways going forward. And then, we are in the background working on a new RFP for our conservation and energy efficiency program, which will be flex step. So, that's happening there. That's how the landscape has progressed. When you get to slide 11, I do want to highlight, when we created the flexible path in 2017, these were the, there's a bar chart on slide 11 that shows where we were in 2010, where we got to with 2018, particularly with the successful step program and the closure of the deal units. And then, there's a comparison. The last two charts say, if we were to make no other changes and we weren't following the flexible path, that would be the outer chart. That would indicate that we would have a tremendous amount of investment in new gas and coal. You know, you wouldn't have closed the coal units, the deal units. And you see probably a stability in terms of renewables. But once we got on the flexible path chart, we started thinking about how to incorporate renewables in the capacity, and this is a capacity chart. And so, we think that there is room to substantially add renewables, and we've been talking about that for several years. We also believe that there's new technology on the horizon that we haven't even seen that we need to stay open to and stay flexible on. Now, the key, though, in the flexible path, it's always been there, that if you have well-performing units, you hold on to them. Because when you're blending the tried and the true with the new, you want to make sure that you're leveraging the things that you own and operate well with new opportunities. Again, this is what we did when we moved from deal to Rio. This is why the step program has been instrumental in helping us manage our load and helping customers who sometimes are often challenged with bills, control their consumption and that we don't build too fast, too quickly. That has been the premise of what we've been following for several years now. When you go to slide 12, you see that there's a tremendous amount of change that's going to happen in light of the way the flexible path in itself was designed and that renewables are embraced more. Now, we know, though, that they're intermittent. And so, that's why you have to have batteries and firming capacity that come along with it. You can't run the city solely on solar, no matter what. I mean, everything we do boils down to facts, physics, and finance. Physics in particular, you can't force that because it cannot handle, it has no self-storage, you can't control it. It's what we call intermittent. It's weather dependent. It's not like a base load plant where you can make that plant run 24/7, 365, or 24/7. You take it down for maintenance. You can control that, which means it's always available for the community. So, while this is a trend, increasing renewables, the reason why we're bundling solutions is to make sure that, again, we're preventing challenges with reliability. One thing you may not have seen, we put it in, you know, in our overall veto record on slide 13, this is what one of the rating agencies said about the flexible path when we started sharing it with them several years ago. CPS Energy continually evaluates its generation portfolio and will leverage its existing community-owned generating assets to bridge to a future that enables more non-emitting resources such as wind, solar, energy storage, and new technology. The flexible path appears to be a measured plan of balanced, clean energy and system reliability and customer growth. And so, that's why our strategy has basically been a credit stabilizer because you can't assume that you don't have to change. You have to be careful not to change in the wrong way, too fast, over-leverage, but you also cannot not change. And so, there's a whole element. There's also, when we talk about ESG, what we're talking about is there are investors that are increasingly having a preference for entities that have a good strategy for addressing the technological changes that are coming and to some degree have already shown up. On slide 16, we have this detail in our work. We did want to highlight our current assets again and note again that we did close two older deal units. That happened in 2018. Our challenges, if you look at the table on slide 16, we've got several units there that are retiring naturally but before 2030. They are older gassing units. The standard life for a gas or a coal unit technically is about 55 years. A couple of them actually will exceed their 55 years because they've been so well-maintained. But the point is, they're ending, you know, end of life, and to maintain safety and reliability and keep it so that we're not shocked when the power doesn't show up, we need to proactively address these units. That's what the flex power bundle has been. People have asked, why haven't we talked more about coal? It's because these units are so old to be, to meet our fiduciary responsibility, we had to address them. And the flex power bundle addresses them very, very well. And again, we'll be bringing back what we think are the best of breed and proposals this year on that. And then, I'll jump down to the last two items. We continue to get questions about Spruce 2. You know, a power plant is not a power plant, is not a power plant. They're all different. And some of the older units, the steam units I just talked about, they're of an vintage and of age that we use them, we use them not every single day. They're used more in Chris, Dr. Uster has explained this before, they're used more in a strategy that fills in the gaps and it keeps us long. They run, they're well-maintained, but they don't run 24 hours, seven days a week. They run a lot during the summer. And so, it is easier to replace that with a flex power bundle because you can, you can have more renewables in that solution. And if you have firming capacity, you can get a pretty parallel profile. When you look at the Spruce units, those are running, those are kind of the core units other than our SGP units, which run extremely well and long as well. And so, you're running those 24/7, and you can't just put the bundle on there because you won't be replacing reliable, consistent power. Once you put those renewables in there, that, even though I'd say 900 megawatts, the best you're going to do is at peak, get a percentage of that, meaning like between the hours of three and seven in the summer. But you're going to get nothing off those renewables in the dead of winter. And Texas, in particular, you know, Texas and all over, we have increasingly a big winter peak. So, those megawatts don't, they don't produce all year long the way base load plan is. So, we do need to look at the Spruce units because even though people would like potentially to close them for environmental purposes, they provide a tremendous amount of stabilization, cost stabilization, a tremendous amount of benefit and reliability, again, for San Antonio and the state. But we think it's worth having a conversation about, if you're really interested, let's talk about it. There are bill impacts associated with everything we do, and we now have bill impacts to show you. It's not just a snap of the finger. There could be some real pressure put on depending on how fast we want to move away from those spruce units. But, if that said, we think it's worth the conversation, the dialogue. What could it feel like? What could it, what could it be? So, we have more information on that. Slide 17 shows that we have, these are all our sources, including our PPAs and our step program contributions. The biggest thing we want to highlight, we have a pretty heavy leverage in gas, particularly since we have the existing gassing units and we have Rio and Peking units, all of that. We probably have one of the most diversified portfolios in the industry. And what diversification does is no matter what, when we do not over-leverage, we protect San Antonio from exposures that really, there's an exposure profile that comes with technology. So, we're able to complement the environmental exposures on coal with the non-emitting of nuclear and solar and wind. And we're able to complement the solar and wind challenges by the way that the coal and gas and nuclear plants function all the time, and they just dip in their production of power again because the sun stops shining and you're at night. So, we just want to highlight again, diversification is something that CPS Energy learned deeply because we weren't diversified back in the 70s, and now we have effectively done that. The analysis and work that we've done with our resource plan looks at a lot of things. It looks at the economic data. I'm looking at page 18 now. We are talking about our general assumptions. Again, we think it's really important to talk about the bill impacts. What coal options could look like, again, for conversation purposes? The growth in renewables, whether the impact of that, both good and challenging? Why batteries are great, but again, there's still some challenges with the duration of the battery. That electrification and electric vehicles is coming. We expect that, but we actually believe that it might take longer. There are also challenges from a regulatory standpoint. Electric vehicles pay no road tax because they don't buy gasoline. We are starting to see some fees. We don't think those fees are going to completely dampen anything to some substance, but we are watching things like that. The reserve margin, having more capacities, CPS Energy in San Antonio has had more capacity than needed, and that's why wholesale sales has been so important for a long time. We have had people propose to us to just go to the market, buy your power off the market, close all your plants. We're in Texas. When you do that, you're more than likely, even if you, even if you structured a renewable deal, you're probably still getting gas. We believe that San Antonio will control its own destiny and still stay long to protect it from bill shock and ensure reliability because we know what those electrons are. We feel like it'll let us control our environmental responsibility destiny. So, the discussion about reserve margin and how long we want to continue to be is a real key discussion. There's a price for being long in power versus go to the market. There's also a potential price for always going to the market and then being whipped around with a lot of volatility. But again, we've controlled that. We need to have a conversation about what that could feel like. Again, we have to care about our employees, particularly our frontline employees. We have to make sure that they, again, are given the opportunity and time to make transitions and learn and know what's going on. We're not rebuilding San Antonio. We're not starting from scratch. The skills that our people have are still going to be really important for a long time because any change in the grid is going to take a while. It's really important that we take care of our frontline employees because they're going to keep the skills that they need to maintain the existing infrastructure while helping them spring into new skills and abilities in the future. So, we believe it's important to double down on them and, again, not create anything where we would be laying off anyone. We are, so accordingly, we think that it's the, it's not that we disagree, again, that coal isn't something important to talk about, but we have to pay attention to the gassing units. We had to get on that. They can be both a priority, but we had to get on the gassing units because in early 2020, we'll start, 2020s, we'll start seeing that pressure. And then, something we're really watching interestingly, I'm sure everybody else is, but with the new administration, you'll see a couple of slides on that. We think that we see that there'll be some significant changes in the regulatory environment for fossil plants, coal, and natural gas, probably more so coal than anything. And then, we're always paying attention to technology and everything we do, we look at the risk. If you go on to slide 19, we kind of, again, have broken up the resource plan into a base set of assumptions and activities. It's how we're running the company now. We did think, again, about the potential for Spruce 1 to be like Flex Power Bundle 3.0 or whatever version it is in the future now that we've got it. And the challenge is, Spruce 1 doesn't have a catalytic device on it, and a selected catalytic device on it. So, it's FDR. And it does have scrubbers. Spruce 2, though, has scrubbers and FDRs and other environmental things Chris will talk about. The regulatory pressure on Spruce 1 was always there, and so, we contemplated that it could look very much like deal closed a bit early. It's older than Spruce 2, and it doesn't have as much of the billion-dollar cost and debt associated with it. So, we haven't decided. Again, that's always been something that we've thought about. If we keep it, the amount of bond... If we keep it, the amount of bonds and debt that we're going to have to issue to put an FDR on and other environmental enhancements are probably clearly around a couple of hundred millions of dollars. And we began to look at the business case that says it might be better to move to a Flex Power Bundle solution and just do it very smoothly like we did with, um, with the Dealey units. But Spruce Two, um, is where I think you'll start to see some differences because the base case, we continue to operate Spruce Two. We do have a lower carbon footprint, um, overall with just Spruce Two in there. It does, you know, contribute to reliability. That's a possibility. That's also a possibility technically. The plant can run longer. We did prepare two scenarios. One of them is what if we, you know, went after not just the steam units, but before 2030 or 2035? What if we went after them and used another Flex Power Bundle? We looked at that and there's a whole scenario and bill impacts and, you know, different, um, things to think about that, that associated with that scenario. And then we ran them one that says, you know, look, Spruce One, you know, that could definitely be a Flex Power Bundle, just like in the base case, but Spruce Two could potentially convert to natural gas. Natural gas in the state of Texas where natural gas is extremely abundant and just gases and, and oil is extremely abundant could be a pathway. And it's not a, um, it's not a complete end game. We think there are going to be more technology around the ability to sequester the emissions from, um, uh, fossil fuels. And so we would continue to look for ways to enhance that technology. But what it could do is minimize the stranded costs associated with so much asset value still on that. Remember the whole plant, they fill about a billion dollars of asset value and a billion dollars of debt. The asset value is, is the biggest issue. The debt is an issue because it doesn't go away just because we want to move on to something else. Twenty, the page 20, you've seen this slide before. Again, we are, we, we do believe that it's important that we're from a position of strength in terms of bills. Our normal standard bills are very affordable in comparison to the other major markets. And so you see that there and that still includes already spending money responsibly and carefully on energy efficiency and renewables. Then you get to slide 21, again, you've seen this before, but it's now all kind of coming together, that every choice has a price tag. There is nothing that we do, including energy efficiency and conservation, that does not have a price tag. We pay people to conserve. We buy renewables, they have a cost. The finding new power solutions has a cost. Maintaining the co, the solutions and, and investments you've made already have a cost. So we, we have been showing this, you know, kind of, these are just general estimates of prices for discussion purposes. When we actually complete the Flex Power Bundle, we'll get real pricing. And hopefully these pricing is lower than what we see here, but again, we need to be able to discuss that this is what we think is out there and required to make sure that we address those steam units. Then the STEP program, we've been asked multiple times, be more aggressive, be more aggressive on steps. You're not being aggressive. Aggressive is one thing, um, cost is another. Every time you try to double that program, it, it's, it's going to double the impact. And so we would move from a, from a program step where we're paying about $3.50 to $0.04 to, and then it would move up seven more dollars and be in the $11 plus range. Again, while we think it's important, we don't think, we think stabilizing that program is more important, but we're up, we're having conversations with people who have questions with us about how, why are we saying that? It's not bad. It's great to increase it. If we had no other program, we would be thinking about tripleizing, tripling the program. But we have a ton of other diversity in our solutions and we think that keeping STEP stable right now is the most important thing. And then the last bar there for $12, you've seen that over and over again. That reflects the average incremental cost of potentially converting the, the Spruce units to renewables and batteries. And I just want to highlight before, that's average. And, and, and we did run the other scenario. If we convert the Spruce Two to a gas unit, there's a cost. It isn't quite as much as this for, as far as bill impact is concerned, but it does cost more to do these incremental things. And it's mostly because we're moving the timing so fast is really why it's happening. And so there's a cost. When you look at the detail, you'll see that in, in some years it's much higher, could be double the $12. In certain years, again, we're trying to push a lot potentially if, uh, the community, if the board ultimately believes, do something significant by 2030 or 2035. And so when you get to 22, that's kind of, we bring it back home. So if you look at our bills and you see nothing else changes except the velocity of how we want to embrace change, we could potentially be one of the most expensive utilities in Texas, which is really bad for a municipal. Should not happen. I think we just have to, when we do things, again, think about timing and velocity. And I actually believe what we need to do is make choices. We can't do everything to, at once. We've got to be mindful that, that there are people, um, at the end of these bills and that this impact is there. There's no extra federal dollars. We don't get CARES funds. We might be able to, if we work together as a community, get federal assistance through the DOE, the DoD, some of that's possible. There might be some advances in hydrogen or some other things. But as it stands today, CPS Energy, there's nobody standing in the wings to give us money. And so that means that money goes straight to a demand for a customer and for on average, every customer to be impacted by programs. 23, I just wanted to, uh, move on and again, give you a little bit of demographics for our employees. Our personnel committee has been looking at this, is continuing to look at that. That, that is trustee Kelly is on that committee and trustee Gonzalez. We are also talking about what happens as we try to move, uh, and, and give people more skills and where to focus and what's, what's the hot skill set and those kinds of things. But we have to again, realize where we are now. Um, majority of our employees are skilled craft employees and salary exempt employees. And so anything that we do with these plants can start to have a ripple effect. We need to do all we can. Our people are dedicated to this community and they've, they produce power conscientiously. And so any program that we need to do needs to be thoughtful in terms of, um, making sure that we take care of people on the front line. Page 24 and 25, I, I highlighted this, I don't think we've seen, um, and a kind of a landscape like this relative to the environment. There are a lot of appointees. I, I do believe we're going to see a lot of movement. And just from our new president, there's been, you know, probably as soon as there's a conversation about COVID, probably the second thing is the environment. And, um, you know, we think regulations are going to increase. We believe there's some conflict at the state level with, with, you know, Texas about how the, the federal government moves forward, but we have to look at, um, regulations at every level, uh, federal, state and local. What we believe is that the complexity of the landscape from a regulatory and legislative concern are going to be very difficult and we will have to be very, very thoughtful as we address these new changes that we think will be coming and come fairly quickly. 26 says that, again, we're making progress. We're keeping all our options open. The Flex Power Bundle is critical. The other thing I put on here is that you all know that we're members of EPRI and where we're concentrating our, um, work with EPRI, um, is that I sit on the, on that board just from a technical standpoint, it's not a compensated board or anything like that, but there, the whole industry is trying to look at low carbon resource initiatives. And there's IOUs and municipals that are partnering together to try to use our resources relative to research and, and development of technology. So we really can crack the code of physics. I always say that this stuff is about facts, physics and finance. And the physics has to be reinvested in and innovation rewarded so we can move forward. And I just highlight EpiCenter because EpiCenter helps us that we're, we're 24/7/365 dealing with everything that, that the company needs us to do. And EpiCenter does some preliminary vetting over and over again with us and helping us screen out, um, technologies that might be helpful, particularly now on the, on the generating side of the house, but also on the customer technology side. So my last slide on 27 is we believe this is a perfect time to have a conversation and put more context out there to have good conversations. Yes, we understand that people are going to criticize us, you know, they always criticize us and they may have different views. I want to assure you, you've got 3,100 energy experts here who have a legacy of knowledge and intellect and they can explain anything that we are doing in great detail. And we also believe that the general interest in the public is that people want to know more. It, it won't always mean that we'll get to the exact same answer, but we do want to make sure that people know that we're being thoughtful. We do listen. We use all input to make better answers and we think that it's time to share. What we want to do is launch a public conversation, uh, to, to get that input. And we also want some of that to be board meetings. We would do some, some conversations with council, with the citizens advisory group, with a, um, rate advisory, uh, committee once it gets started. But we also believe we should just talk to schools and, and superintendents and, and employers and small businesses and medium sized businesses. So, so if anything that they're interested in, I believe we should answer their questions and take in their input. There is no request for the board to make any action today and there will not be in the near future because you all are just getting this. I'm sorry again, we worked up, worked on this to the very last minute, but we promised that we would get it done for this meeting and you have it. And again, I think this is a period where we're going to enter where we get a lot of input. I think, somebody asked me this morning, how long do I think it's going to take? I think it takes as long as it needs to, to make sure that we hear as many voices as we can and that we bring those, uh, that information back to the board. And the board has an opportunity to ask lots of questions and challenge. It is not a definitive direction of any one way to go. It is, here's more information so we as a community can decide what San Antonio's energy future looks like. I know that was a lot. I did want Chris to move on and tell you a little bit more about those scenarios so you can hear that and then we will stop for questions.
Okay. Thank you Paula and good afternoon Chair Steen and Board of Trustees.
Chairman Steen, can, can I insert something at this point before Dr. Euster?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. It's, it's Ed Kelly.
Yes, Dr. Euster, this is, uh, trustee Kelly. And first I want to congratulate, uh, our CEO on an outstanding presentation, uh, that she just finished because I believe it shows that we are taking a very thoughtful, systematic, logical approach towards a very complicated subject. And, uh, it, it gives me comfort that we have the resources, uh, in our management team to be able to do this. So, uh, Madam CEO, I want you to know that your report, uh, made me feel good that we're definitely on top of these issues. But the thing I want to say is less than an hour ago, I received a very comprehensive one inch report with probably a couple of hundred pages of detailed information called, uh, Flexible Path Resource Plan. Obviously I have not had a chance to read it because I received it, as I said, less than an hour ago, uh, but I have thumbed through it and, and it appears to me to have a tremendous amount of detailed information, uh, on this company that pretty much, uh, from what I can tell is our playbook. It would be like the Dallas Cowboys handing, uh, their other teams a copy of their playbook. I would like to see this report stamped, competitive information, personal, confidential, not to be released, uh, until I am confident and that the board is confident that this is information that should be shared outside of the company. Now I noticed that, uh, the Paula's cover letter is addressed, uh, and copied to city council, city manager, uh, mayor's chief of staff, et cetera. And that's fine with me, but I want to make sure that when they receive it, that they are tied to a confidentiality agreement. I'll be honest with you, if I were doing this in my business, before I sent it out, I would have each recipient sign a non-disclosure agreement and an NDA because as I skim this, it looks like it has very detailed information. And I don't think we should be sharing that level of information with our competitors or with anybody else. So my request is twofold, Mr. Chairman. Number one, I would like to stamp this report, as I've said, confidential, uh, competitive information not to be released, number one. Number two, I would like to have the board have plenty of time to study it. And if the board subsequently decides to release all or some of that information, that would be fine. But until the board makes that determination, uh, I think we need to, to keep this very close hold. And then finally, I would ask that Dr. Euster keep his presentation at a very high level and not drill down into the details of this report because again, this is our playbook. And if I ran the Dallas Cowboys, I would not hand my playbook to the other NFL teams. And that I think is what we'd be doing here if we don't protect this information.
Mr. Chairman.
It's Dr. Mackey.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Can you hear me?
I would like to compliment Ms. Gold Williams on this, um, uh, Flexible, Flexible Path, uh, Resource Plan and her presentation, outstanding presentation, uh, what she covered. I read the first 14 pages of this Flexible Path, uh, like the board, board member, I received this around 12 o'clock and I started on the, read the first 14 pages of it and it's the introduction and it covered basically about what Ms. Gold Williams just covered, um, in her presentation, that right there. However, I have not had an opportunity to start on the rest of it, but I will and I got ti, I got time to do that, to read through it and, but just thumb through it like my other colleague, it's a lot of resource stuff that I think is good. I think, not good, I think it's outstanding. And, and I want to thank Ms. Ms. Gold Williams because I've been asking for this for two years, to have this document, understand our plan, uh, and the, the path that we're going, direction that we're going, and it, it has hit everything that I've asked, that I've asked her to do. So Ms. Gold Williams, I am very pleased with what I see so far. I just only read the first 14 pages, but I, I look forward to reviewing this, this document and getting back with you. But again, your presentation was outstanding, uh, a good plan, good direction for this, uh, for the company, um, and, uh, a lot of good information for the board to, uh, receive and to digest and understand the impact, um, the direction, the plan that, where, where are we going with this? So I, I, I am very pleased with it. I mean, I just, I can't say enough about the document that you just gave me. I've been waiting for this for two years. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair. Chairman, this is, uh, Mayor. Before we get on to the next section, I do have some comments also.
Do you want me to go ahead?
I can't hear, uh, Chair Steen, uh, Mayor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Uh, sure. Mayor, you want to make some comments on, on, um?
Yeah, sure. Well, no, first of all, let me, let me compliment, um, Paula and her team. I, I think that, that just the, the high level overview that we're getting right now, uh, highly anticipated and just i- illustrates the complexity of the, of the issues that we're going to be facing as well as the, the myriad decision points that we're going to have to come to as a board and as a community as we go through and, and determine the best path for us, uh, given all of our pillar and, um, priorities. I have not read the book, um, I have not read the book, although I agree with the comments of Dr. Mackey. I've been looking forward to this and I think the community has been looking forward to this as well. And I know that this has not been assembled haphazardly. The information that's been shared is not careless. It's been, it's been requested for a number of years and this is the information that we need as a board to make good decisions for our community. And this is the decision, these are, this is the information that the community is gonna hold us accountable to knowing and understanding in order to make those decisions. And as I read it and pick it up, it's quite clearly stamped, "Public Information", and this is the information that will be poured over by all the committees that, Paula, you outlined earlier. So, I would not be in favor of, at all, of us creating some kind of non-disclosure based on this information here. I think there's plenty of discussion that we have under executive privilege, but this is not, this document is not one of them. And I know that you did not come to that conclusion carelessly and I appreciate that very much. That's all, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a thought which is perhaps, we've got an executive session scheduled for later in the meeting and some of this, especially if Mr. Kelly feels that this is sensitive and confidential, we could have an opportunity to go ahead and go into executive session now if everybody agreed to do that and maybe hear some more, hear some more on this. Possibly, Mr. Kelly could be persuaded, but that's, that's an option if you all want to go in that direction.
I would agree with that.
And what we would do-
I will let him answer.
Excuse me, what we would do is, it's not, it's not create, in other words, we would just go into, which I think Ms. Schellman would, would tell us we can do if everybody's okay with it, we would go ahead and go into executive session. We would talk about this item, but we would also go ahead and talk about the other two items that we were gonna discuss in the executive session. So, we just have one executive session, we just have it earlier in the meeting.
Chairman, should we just go ahead with Chris's presentation and then we can convene an exec at the appropriate time?
Well, if, if, if Mr. Kelly has some concerns about it, again, Mayor, because all of us are in the same situation and I understand why it was, it was put together at the last minute and we did receive it just a short while ago. So, all of us are in this situation really, really not knowing what's in that, what's in that thick notebook. And it would be an opportunity, and we're allowed to do it, I'm not gonna say that, I think that, I'll ask Ms. Schellman, but I think under the, oh, I'm trying to remember, it's the Competitive Matters, I think it's Section 551.086, I believe that's right. May not have that exactly right. But anyway, we would be allowed to talk about it and it would be an opportunity to, if we're bumping up against something that's potentially confidential, whatever, it's an opportunity for us to discuss that under the Competitive Matters exception.
Okay, that's fine. If we're talking about the same documents that I've got in my hands though, it says our January twenty-one Flexible Path Resource Plan, it's quite clearly up at the top, says "Public Information", but I understand the need for discussion, so that's all, Chairman, thank you.
But this is trustee Gonzalez. I mean, if Mr., if Chris provides his presentation, that's pretty high level and then we can discuss the thick book that we all just received in executive session.
Okay.
So, I'm coming out of line here where Chris should just give his presentation. There's no, that's pretty high level and then we, I would recommend then going to executive session.
Mr. Kelly, what do you think of that?
I'm sorry?
What do you think of that?
Well, that was one of my requests. I don't mind Dr. Euster giving his presentation. I would ask him to be very careful about making sure that it is at a very high level. I'm not trying to hide anything, but I'm amazed that a board member would want to release a report that is, been on our desk for less than an hour and has a huge amount of information in it and release it to the public when it appears to be very sensitive stuff. So, I have, I don't have a problem with Chris giving a high-level overview. But before we drill down into specifics, I, as a trustee who was charged with doing this type of thing, I want to read the report and make sure I'm not giving away the house.
All right, well, if that's, if that's, if everybody's okay with that, then maybe we could go forward with Dr. Euster's Generation Planning Update and then after that, we could go into executive session and cover all the items that we're gonna cover in the executive session anyway. We would just be taking it out of order. But it would, it would give Mr. Kelly an opportunity to maybe question the staff more on, on these areas of interest that he has.
Okay, Chair Steen, you want me to go do it?
Sure, just, I didn't hear back from people. Is that generally okay with everybody? Any objections, let's put it that way? All right.
No objection, trustee Gonzalez.
Ma'am, what'd you say?
I said, no objection, let's proceed with his presentation.
All right, let's go, Dr. Euster, thank you. And then we'll go into executive session.
Okay, so I'll provide a summary-level update on our generation planning effort here. And this really is a new Flexible Path Resource Plan, one that addresses the aging gas steam units that we've talked about for a while as well as moves us beyond coal this decade before 2030. There's no actions that we're looking for with the board, as Paula said. The board ultimately will have to decide and approve any actions. But we want to take this and start to engage with our community in a dialogue around this, this plan. And again, ultimately, the board will have to approve any actions coming out of the plan. If you go to page two, objectives here to share preliminary view of our generation mix and our new Flexible Path Resource Plan and also look forward to an engagement with the community and stakeholders on this plan to get their feedback. Page three, the agenda, want to give some context for the discussion, talk about some preliminary view of the options, sort of high-level cost benefits of the plan, timeline and milestones, and then questions.
Wait, Dr. Euster?
Yes.
Just, just, just to make sure we understand what this is. It is not, the Flexible Path Resource Plan is not saying we've decided that coal comes out. It is an option of consideration. So, when, when, when Dr. Euster is saying "the plan", he means comprehensively that there are options in it, you can see them in more context, but there has not been one single decision to supersede the board in any way. We're just showing you, we can keep going, we can go a little bit further down the path, we could go in the middle. And so, I want us to know that we're not saying the plan is a recommendation, it is a view of options.
You see what I mean about misunderstanding stuff when you don't study it carefully?
Yeah, yes, I think we're talking about scenarios here and again, you know, these could change based on feedback or discussions with the board. So, again, no actions are being requested at this stage. If you go to page four, you know, we are talking about carefully decarbonizing our generation mix. In the past, it's all been about sort of large baseload power plants. I think today, we're in a place where we continue to leverage the traditional assets that have served this community very well over many decades, plus renewables, plus energy storage, plus energy efficiency, and all of that working together to provide power to our community. In the future, we will be, you know, the Flex Power Bundle will be moving more towards additional renewable and low to zero carbon firming capacity. And the Flex Power Bundle is our first step in this direction. If you go to page five, I think this overall, again, I don't want to call it a plan, but this preliminary view is in alignment with the CAP, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, which the Board Trustees passed a resolution in support of the CAP in August of 2019. And I think this is aligned with that, that, that goal. Our guiding pillars and foundation will really be the basis for this long-term transition. That includes reliability, customer affordability, security, safety, environmental responsibility, resiliency, and financial responsibility. So, these guiding pillars will be the foundation to support a lower carbon footprint. You go to page seven, and Paula said this in her opening remark, in her presentation, that we're not starting from scratch here, we have a diverse generation mix. I think we're the fourth-largest power player in the state of Texas and that diversity of generation mixes has served our community well for decades and decades. And so, you know, part of this is how do we transition this? We're not starting from scratch. And so, this is important to realize the things that we have in our portfolio today. If you go to page eight, we have to do this carefully in terms of meeting San Antonio's demand needs. So, what you see here is basically the energy demand against the supply and the supply by different fuel costs. And so, you can see the, the bold line is basically the energy demand by San Antonio. There is, there are two lines there because that's the added reserve margin that's required to serve our community. And you can see the different resource mix, including nuclear, coal, gas, Flex Power Bundles and the existing renewables. And you can see with this, with this preliminary, you know, proposal, we would be moving, we'd be addressing the gas steam units, but we would also be addressing the coal units in the latter part of this decade. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. On page nine, it shows, and you all have seen this chart before, this is all of our generation by age. And you can see we have some aging gas steam units with the Summers and the Brannick units. That's about seventeen hundred megawatts, which we've talked a lot about. And then we have the coal units, Spruce One and Two, which is about thirteen hundred megawatts. So, you're talking about three thousand megawatts of generation capacity that, you know, that we are looking at scenarios to transition this decade. And, you know, that's over half of our capacity. So, you know, this, I think to everyone's point, we want to be very thoughtful in this process. You go to page ten, our oldest gas units are the ones that are, you know, that we have to address first. They will definitely reach end of life here by 2030. But we have this very exciting Flex Power Bundle as a way to replace those plants. Again, they're more peaking assets and they line up better with renewables and, and storage, but we're gonna add firming capacity to make sure that they're reliable as well. You go to page eleven, you know, the, when we think about the coal plants, we also have to consider the investment in Spruce Two and the potential stranded costs. And that, that is the big factor in terms of transitioning off of coal for the Spruce plants. It represents twenty-one percent of our generation in 2020. Spruce Two especially has all the environmental controls on them, scrubbers, baghouse, mercury control, SCRs. Spruce One does not have the SCR, but it does have scrubbers, baghouse, mercury control, ashes, the fly ashes recycled. And so, we have a net book value of 1.255 billion on it, on both those units and we have debt service on it. And so, we do need to be thoughtful in how we transition, especially for Spruce Two because of the investment that the community has made into that plant. If you go to page twelve, one way to mitigate that stranded cost is basically to use that plant, but burn a different fuel source. So, instead of burning coal, we could use gas. Using gas, you would still use a boiler system, you would still use a turbine. And so, if you convert Spruce Two to gas, you are able to kind of mitigate a large portion of that stranded cost. And what's interesting is the gas conversion is actually pretty, pretty moderate. Approximately costs about forty million, again, these are high-level numbers, to convert it to, to, to gas. If we continue to run it as coal, we have some environmental retrofits that we'd have to do this decade that would cost, you know, roughly sixty million. So, to convert it to gas and not have to do some of those environmental retrofits is actually more attractive. So, the gas conversion is interesting. It has a low, low retrofit cost, there are lower emissions, the carbon is about forty percent lower than, than running it as a coal plant and it also minimizes the stranded costs issued. So, you know, we, again, no decisions looking to be made. We want to have a dialogue, we want to kind of, you know, talk through this with the community and with the board and ultimately, the board will have to decide exactly what actions we'll take. If you go to page thirteen, this is the timing of all the aging gas units and the Spruce coal plants. And you can see, and again, to Paula's point, you know, we, it, it looks more formal than it is. It really is a set of scenarios, but we would look to do all of these before 2030. The gas steam units, we definitely need to get those done here this, this decade. And you can see the Spruce Two conversion to gas. Because we're not putting a lot of additional capital, I don't think it necessarily changed, you know, would, would lead to an extension of the life. So, I think the lifespan of a gas converted Spruce unit could be flexible and would give us a lot of optionality on how long we run that, that unit after that conversion. You go to page fourteen, these are some of the assumptions, again, that replace, for aging gas steam units, we're gonna replace those with the Flex Power Bundles. They line up much more like a peaking asset. I think on the financial side, they're baked, you know, baked into our plans. There's no issue around accelerated depreciation or stranded costs. On the workforce side, there will be some re-skilling and training around new technologies because we will be bringing in new technologies with the Flex Power Bundle. The environmental aspects with the Flex Power Bundle will be a lower carbon footprint, lower emissions and the reliability will be there because we will make sure that the renewables are firmed up. On the Spruce alternatives, and again, we looked at all sorts of alternatives. We looked at placing both of them with renewables, plus storage, plus firming. And we looked at what we have, you know, on the table here is to have Spruce One be ultimately replaced by a Flex Power Bundle, which has a lot of renewables in it. But we need to really understand how that firming capacity will firm it out in a more of a baseload operations, which is kind of what the plants run as today. The Spruce Two would be a gas conversion. We would need the additional funding for Spruce Two gas conversion, but it will be less than some of the environmental retrofits that we have that are required here in the future. And it does mitigate stranded costs. So, about four hundred and fifty million of the 1.26 billion would be subject to accelerated depreciation. We'd have to kind of understand how to spread that out over some timeframe. There would be a more natural transition for, for the gas operations. Running a gas plant and a coal plant, they are different, but it, there is a lot of similarities there as well. So, I think it'll be a more natural transition for the workforce with this scenario. And on the environmental side, we would reduce the carbon emissions by about forty percent. At Paula's point, we would look at additional ways that we could, you know, carbon offset on the plant or, you know, people are talking about hydrogen, I think that's still a little bit further out there. But there may be ways to additionally reduce the carbon footprint of a converted Spruce plant, Spruce Two plant. And then reliability, I think, with Spruce Two converted to gas, if we, if we go down that direction, it would be a dispatchable plant. So, on page fifteen, it shows a conceptual timeline. And really, the point of here, it does have some dates here, but these dates can move around depending on kind of how the dialogue and the discussion goes. But the point here is, the Brannick units, Brannick One, Two, and Three would be replaced by the Flex Power Bundle that we have under RFP right now, today. Summers One, which is one of the other gas units, would be replaced by a Flex Power Bundle Two. Summers Two would be a Flex Power Bundle Three. Spruce One would be a Flex Power Bundle Four, but we would really need to understand that firming aspect because, again, today it's operating more hours than the aging gas units. And then Spruce Two in this scenario would, would convert to gas. So, again, conceptual, these dates could move around quite a bit, but again, we wanted to put something on the table that the community could have a dialogue on. And with that, that concludes my remarks.
All right, do we have any questions or comments for Dr. Euster?
Yes, I think Dr. Euster, it's Dr. Mackey. I think you did an outstanding job explaining. It's good, it's something that we can study and review and make good decisions on. I think you did a good- I think we did a good job. Good presentation, Dr. Euster. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Dr. Mackey.
Chairman, I just had a couple of questions in addition. First of all, uh, again, thank you, uh, staff. It's great, uh, presentation and much anticipated. I appreciate the overview, Chris. It's very helpful. In terms of process, um, I forget which slide it was on, the initial presentation, Paula, I want to say fifteen. You listed out, uh, the committees that are going to be having a discussion, uh, to help provide some perspective. Tell me, um, tell me how city council, uh, can be helpful with scheduling and, and making sure that they're, uh, present and informed. What, what can I bring back to my colleagues on that?
Thank you, Chair, uh, for the question. I just want to highlight a, a couple of things. Um, the, the parties that I do, or the bodies I do mention on that, uh, sheet, I think are the ones that, you know, obviously, uh, would be, you know, have a wide range of questions and they're, you know, they're speaking, all of you are speaking from, um, your official positions. So what I have talked to the city manager about is we, I will make myself available, Chris will, we can come over, have general conversations, we can also, you know, come to committee meetings. We're just going to make ourselves available. To Trustee Kelly's point, it is a tremendous amount of information and data, and we don't think, you know, that there's any, we think that it's better to have a dialogue than to just rush through it. So, so I think letting them know, and this came up at Chair Steen's confirmation, is there more to provide? And we said, yes, it was. So as busy as, uh, the council is, um, we would like a formal ability to address the entire council, and then we will also make ourselves available to one-on-ones and to, uh, committees. Because we, again, we think there's just multiple ways to look at this. I do also want to highlight, this is something that we believe everyone in the community should have an opportunity to know about. And so while we have these formal groups that we need to spend some deep dives with, we're, we're going to be open. I mean, what we did when we did the practical path in the first place is we went all over the city. We went to neighborhood associations, we went to, um, you know, we did a superintendent and educators and a forum. We did a, um, utility leader, I mean, not energy leaders, people who are managing their energy costs. There was a whole group of them. We have a ton of stakeholders now. And again, this isn't something that we should take lightly. I mean, if we decide to do something, and I'm not saying we would, we try, uh, try to do something, uh, I think we've got to engage that dialogue because there are deep implications to people's bills and pocketbooks. And so I just wanted to assure you and the rest of the board, um, our team, it took a lot of time to get multiple things going, but we also understand that we need to make ourselves available for conversations now, and we are set up for that.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, and as far as, uh, scheduling, I, I think when, obviously, uh, council members will have varying levels of interest in terms of the details, but I think at an appropriate time, and you tell me, we'll have to talk about when that is, but perhaps we, uh, we schedule an A session presentation, um, you know, maybe that can be inclusive of some of the feedback that you've gotten already. With respect to, um, the, the committees themselves, the more formal committees, there is a cap advisory committee formed. So if we can just add them to the list too, I think they'll provide some good in, input. And, um, uh, you know, obviously, that, that process will be, uh, informative and integrative with, um, the flex power bundle itself.
We will absolutely add them to the list, and I will say again, we are open to talking to everyone. We did, we think this is about collaboration and respectful dialogue, and so we, we would love, we will add them to the list and do outreach.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Paula. Thank you, Chair.
I can't hear Chair Steen again. Is, is that just me?
No, no. Uh, I, I, I'm saying, uh, I'm sorry, uh, we want to go ahead and, I think that concludes, unless there are any additional questions or comments, that concludes the Agenda Item Six, the CEO's report. We're starting to get behind on our time. Why don't we go ahead and go, go through, it's a little bit of a change from what I said earlier, but just go, go ahead and go through six, seven, eight, and then we'll have the executive session. And Mr. Kelly, we can address some of your concerns during that executive session, if, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
All right, let's go to, uh, Agenda Item Six, Additional Updates. And we have fiscal year 2021 COVID-19 financial impacts as of December 31, 2020 with Mr. Gary Gold.
Uh, thank you, sir. I'll begin my presentation on PDF page four. Uh, and as noted, I will be covering our fiscal 2021 financial impacts as of December 31st. So this is including eleven months' worth of actual and an estimate for the month of January. Moving to PDF page five, uh, as, as I provide each, uh, month during this presentation, just as a disclaimer, on the, uh, this is really preliminary financial information. We, it is still subject to change. There's a, a lot of activity that occurs this last month of the year that the accounting team will be undertaking, and so, uh, this is just a projection for our full year results. Moving to PDF page six, objectives and takeaways. As noted, I'm going to cover the financial results, uh, forecasts, and highlight the, the projections for our financial metrics. Moving on to PDF page seven, the agenda. Uh, I'll, I'll start by discussing our year-to-date net income. We'll take a look at our electric sales by sector, uh, a view of our net income forecast for the full year, as well as our flow of funds, projections for our key financial metrics, and then we'll end with actions and next steps. Moving to PDF page eight, this is a look at our net income through December, so the first eleven months of the year. And I would direct your attention to the, the bottom line of, uh, the middle column, our actuals and the net income that we're, uh, reporting as of December is a fifty-one point eight million compared to the budget of just, uh, a, a negative point five million. If you would look over to the last column, you can see that the key drivers to the variances. And I'll, I'll just highlight just a, a couple of those. From a revenue perspective, we are, uh, below our budget year-to-date, primarily driven by lower wholesale revenues that we saw during the summertime. And that was really a result of lower pricing that we saw in ERCOT throughout the summer. To offset that, uh, the organization has done an excellent job at, at looking at cost savings, uh, both from an operation and maintenance standpoint, where we've, uh, done some things around hiring freezes and reprioritizing projects, as well as looking at our interest and debt-related, uh, costs. We've done some, uh, refundings that, that you will hear about that have provided savings, and we've also seen the benefit of the lower interest rates. Moving to PDF page nine, this is a look at our electric sales by customer segment. And this is for the month of December, and it's, uh, very, very much in line with what we have been seeing, uh, since the start of the pandemic. Uh, we've had certain sectors such as the hotel and food services and educational services that their usage is down from what we had budgeted. That is being partially offset by increases in the, in the residential sector. But overall, the impact on our usage in December and what we've really been seeing, uh, to this point in the current year is that we've seen our sales volumes about two to two point two percent below what we had budgeted. Moving on to PDF page ten, this is a, a look at our net income projection on a full-year basis. And I would direct your attention to the second column, bottom line. Our, our net income, we are projecting just, uh, a, a small negative, a, a small loss of, of four hundred thousand. Uh, like I said, this includes projections for, uh, January compared to our, our budgeted amount of three point nine. Again, when you, when you look at the variances in that third column, you can see some of the same, uh, things that I talked about previously. Uh, our wholesale sales are lower than what we had budgeted. We've also seen that the lower retail sales estimated at about two point one percent below budget. And this includes projections for what we believe, uh, our, our, our bad debt, uh, it will look like by the time we get to the end of the year. As Paula noted earlier, we're still doing, uh, quite a bit of analysis, looking at past due customer accounts, and we, we are going to be refining these projections here as we close out the, the year in January.
Gary, quick, quick question, uh, from Trustee Kelly. Gary?
Yes, yes, sir.
Going from a fifty-one point eight million dollar profit through eleven months of the year to a negative, uh, thirty days later, um, is that mainly because of the write-offs you anticipate? Or what, what causes such a huge change, uh, in thirty days?
Uh, that, that is a really good question. That is one contributor to that, that change, uh, in that last thirty days. Uh, the, the other item that had been planned for in our budget in the month of January, we were anticipating, uh, some, some property sales to occur, and those property sales would have, uh, would have, uh, contributed a gain. But those have been moved, uh, forward into the next fiscal year. So as a result, that's why you're seeing that big change from December to our year-end projections.
Okay. The other question, particularly when you get to your flow of funds analysis, does that contemplate the deferrals, write-offs, uh, forgiveness, et cetera, et cetera, that we are experiencing with our accounts receivable, uh, during the COVID phase? Or in other words, are you factoring in, uh, those numbers in your cash flow numbers and our, your net income numbers?
Yes, sir. We, we, those are factored into both the, the net income calculation and, and the flow of funds calculation.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in a minute, Gary. It's, it's factored in.
Hold on, let's go away. Did you, uh, for people listening, identify yourself. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. This is Paula Williams, the president. I just wanted to, to, to go a little bit deeper to Trustee Kelly's question. Yes, it factors it in, but I think we're seeing, um, a trend and a development in, in receivables that we've never seen before. I, I think one of our challenges is have we reserved it up in terms of the challenges we're going to have when we move back to collections, uh, normally? And so, uh, we, we will give a call to every board member to give you a little bit more context, but it's, it's significant. So I think that's a question that I've asked Gary over and over again, to make sure that when we close, we, we, we don't, we don't over, um, make it an algorithm without thinking about this is unprecedented and, and that the trend will continue into the early, uh, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, mostly, uh, very much because the economy is slowed down with the vaccines being slowed. So we'll give you a call to give you, uh, each, each board member. We did talk to the audit, uh, and finance, and we'll touch base with them, but this is probably one of the, the more difficult estimations that we're going to make at year end.
Okay, well, the point I'm making is that, as we all know, cash is king. Uh, and, and regardless of what the statements look like on an accrual basis, at the end of the day, cash is what counts. And I noticed later on in the presentation, we're going to be talking about a hundred million dollar, uh, contribution for benefit expenses. Uh, I just want to make sure we're keeping a very, very close eye on our cash flow, uh, because i- if we start, uh, having some issues with cash flow, then that, uh, drives a tremendous amount of additional issues.
We are definitely, um, very much focused on, on the cash, uh, cash flow, the cash balance, the cash on hand, and our overall liquidity, but, but we will come back and spend some more time with each board member on this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your question, and thank you, Paula, for the additional context. Just one, one other item to mention on PDF page ten, uh, you know, as I noted, I mentioned some of the impacts to, to the revenues, which we've talked about previously. Again, here you can see as you move down, uh, the, the middle column and look at our non-fuel expenses, both the O and M and interest and debt-related, the, the, the work that has been achieved by the organization, is, and projected to be achieved in terms of cost savings. Page eight provides a look at the change to our net income, um, since, uh, our previous forecast. At the end of November, when we put the, this information together, we were projecting a, a loss for the year of six point two. As I noted earlier, uh, now at the end of December for the full year, we're projecting that four hundred thousand. You can see the, the two key drivers, and again, very consistent with what we've talked about, the, uh, continued efforts to manage, uh, costs. Uh, you see during the, the month of, uh, December, uh, we, we identified additional cost, uh, savings, um, but, uh, we also did see some offset to that with, uh, some of our bad debt, uh, recordings, as well as some adjustments in our January sales. Moving to PDF page twelve, this is the flow of funds. Again, using all of the same, uh, assumptions that you heard about previously with respect to our retail electric sales, bad debt, wholesale revenues, as well as the offset that we have in terms of, you know, cost savings. Looking at, uh, the, the second column towards the end, you can see our total R and R fund additions of two hundred and sixteen million compared to our budget of two hundred and fifty-seven. So we're currently projecting R and R fund additions to be about forty-one million dollars below the budget. Now additionally, we have been looking at our, our capital program, and where do we have opportunities to, uh, delay projects or defer into next year? And this year, we are seeing, uh, reductions in our capital expenditures of approximately sixty-two million dollars, as noted by that last line item on that chart.
Gary, again, um, you can defer CapEx, uh, at least in the short run, uh, number one. Number two, one of the major, uh, indicators of the health of this company is its R and R account. So two questions, um, how do you anticipate funding needed capital expenditures going forward? And number two, uh, how do you feel about the R and R account vis-à-vis, uh, what we typically have tried to do as a best-in-class company?
As far as our R and R account, and actually, uh, that would be one of the items that we'd be covering here as we move into the next page, looking at our days cash on hand, which is our, our projection of, of the amounts of cash that we think, uh, we will see in both our general fund as well as in our R and R at the end of the year. Uh, we're actually still projecting a, a fairly, uh, a good number, well above our, our minimum thresholds. We're projecting that number to be two hundred and two million, our two hundred and two days cash on hand. So, um, right now, as we end this year and go into next year, we, we're still looking at being able to fund, uh, our, our capital program with a, a very good mix, a balanced mix between cash and debt.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So moving to, um, PDF page thirteen, as I mentioned here, this is the projection for our financial metrics here as we, uh, come up on the end of the year. Our, uh, adjusted debt service coverage, where we had budgeted a one point six times coverage, we're currently projecting we're currently projecting to end the year at one point five five. Uh, and that is above our, our threshold. Um, to the question that, that you had, Mr. Kelly, about our days cash on hand, you can see that we're currently projecting in the median impact to end the year at two hundred and two days cash on hand, uh, which is, uh, above our minimum threshold of a hundred and fifty days cash on hand.
Do you think our thresholds are consistent with our double A plus credit rating?
Yes, yes, sir. We, we do. The, you know, these are minimum thresholds. You know, obviously, we, we, we target to be, uh, above these. These are absolute minimums, but these are, in working with the rating agencies, some of the thresholds that they have, uh, discussed with us, uh, related to our credit rating. Moving to PDF page fourteen, this is a look at our debt capitalization. And again, here you can see that we had budgeted to end the year at sixty one point seven percent, which was, uh, above where we had ended the previous year at fifty nine point nine. Our current projections are at sixty point six. Again, some of the things that we've done with our capital plan, as, as well as our debt issuances, have allowed us to, to manage this and, and, and keep it, uh, right around the sixty percent that we have been targeting. Obviously, we're gonna continue to watch this one closely as we wanna try to, in, in the long term, keep this number below sixty percent. And so moving to the last page, PDF number fifteen. Um, as, as Paula talked about, you know, there are still a, a number of things that we are going to be closely monitoring. Uh, the most, uh, most, uh, attention, we will be looking at our accounts receivable and our bad debt assumptions here. You know, as Paula noted, that the, the amount of, uh, past due accounts are higher than we had historically seen as a result of, you know, us discontinuing the, the disconnections, the moratorium on disconnections right now. I mean, we're gonna continue to work with our customers and that proactive outreach to reach out to them to look at where we can help them get onto payment plans and, and find assistance through other programs. It's gonna be part of helping us manage the, the, the bad debt and our accounts receivable. To you, to your point, Mr. Kelly, we are watching our cash flows to ensure we have, uh, adequate liquidity for our capital program and for our day to day activities. And our, our work around additional cost savings i- is really an ongoing effort. Uh, and you, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in the next presentation. And, uh, we will be back to provide an update to the board, um, at the end of the year. So with that, I'll see if there are any other questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Gold?
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Trustee Kelly again. I want to congratulate Gary and Paula and the team. Um, I know it's not fun to talk about unglamorized things such as financial statements, but I can tell you, if, if the financial statements start going south, the whole company goes south. Uh, there's nothing else you can do to sustain it once you let the financial get out of control. So, uh, I wanna congratulate Paula and her team for doing an incredible job in this pandemic period. I served on some other boards that would absolutely kill for the, uh, type of numbers that Gary and, and, uh, Paula and the team have put together. So even though we're suffering some hits, they are doing an incredible job. Uh, and I'm not sure that they get the credit that they need to be able to manage these types of finances with all the other pressures that are coming down on their head every day.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to reiterate, uh, what, uh, Trustee said. Uh, Mr. Gold, I, I know Paul is the leader in all of this, but Mr. Gold does a tremendous job in explaining this very simple, that you understand what's going on. And I feel good that he's on top of it and the job that's doing, that he's doing just an extraordinary job and, and with the finances. And I appreciate, uh, Mr. Gold and his team and with Paula, Paula Gold Williams' leadership, doing a tremendous job. It's just all the stuff I've been keeping up and reading and he's on top of it. And then, and I appreciate the time that he gives me. When I don't understand some things and I ask for a call, he returns the call, explains it, and I wanna thank him for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Any other questions or comments? Let's move to six B, which is cost savings financing transactions. Mr. Gotham, Stringer, here.
Thank you, Chairman Steen. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My presentation today will begin on PDF page seventeen of your packet. Moving over to the objectives and takeaways for the presentation on PDF page eighteen, I'm excited to share the cost savings associated with the two financing transactions that we completed last fall. On the agenda on PDF page nineteen, I'll provide some background on the two financing transactions we completed, which were approved by the board last May. I'll give an overview of our outstanding debt and share our ability to effectively manage our debt portfolio. Then I'll share the outstanding results of the two transactions and the cost savings associated with them. Finally, I will end with a summary. Turning over to PDF page twenty. In May of last year, the board approved our financing transactions. We would like to thank you all for your continued support and diligence in helping us make cost savings a priority for our company, not just related to financing efforts, but all cost savings initiatives across our organization, where we can ultimately pass the benefits along to our customers. As many of you are aware, the Federal Reserve has pledged to keep interest rates low for the next several years. And we do everything we can to be proactive and take advantage of these low borrowing costs. Your approval enabled us to take advantage of market conditions and refinance three hundred and seventy five million of our twenty thirteen series debt and remarket a hundred million of our series twenty fifteen D debt, all for savings. I'm gonna share the savings details later in the presentation. Turning over to PDF page twenty one. This shows an overview of our outstanding debt. As you can see, we have almost six billion dollars of debt outstanding in a diversified mix of fixed rate debt, variable rate debt, and commercial paper. We have one of the strongest credit ratings in the market across both municipally owned and investor owned utilities. This high credit rating enables us to be proactive across all types of debt and take advantage of market opportunities to lower our average borrowing costs. Much in the same way as an individual who has an extremely high FICO score is able to refinance their car loan or home mortgage at low interest rates that provides them savings. And the savings benefit that we get gets ultimately passed on to our customers. Turning over to page twenty two of your packet. This is an interesting chart that shows our ability to take advantage of our strong credit rating and lower our average borrowing cost due to a decline in interest rate that we've seen over the past fifteen years. This high rating, coupled with our ability to effectively manage our debt portfolio, has helped us realize savings from low interest rates. So if you look at the top left of the chart, it shows that back in two thousand and six, our average cost of debt was four point eight seven percent. And as you move down the chart to the bottom right, you can see that it's three point eight one, uh, percent today. This translates to over five hundred and sixty million dollars of gross savings that we have provided our customers during this time by refinancing just under four billion dollars of debt. Now turning over to PDF page twenty three. I'm gonna turn over to our first transaction that we executed this past fall, where we refinanced debt that was originally issued back in twenty thirteen with outstanding results. Leading up to the transaction, we spoke to both new and existing investors who were interested in our story and ultimately invested in us. They consider our credit rating, our strategic vision, and strong management as key reasons to buy our bond. So those conversations and the market environment resulted in almost a hundred and ten million dollars in gross cash flow savings or eighty six million dollars in net present value savings over the life of the debt. And although this effort was led by our debt management team, it really was a coordinated effort across financial services and our company that made this transaction possible. The table on the right hand side of this page shows the annual savings details by year. You can see at the top, in fiscal year twenty one, which is ending later on this month, we created almost two million dollars of savings that directly impacts our bottom line in a year that we really needed. And as you move to the middle, from fiscal year twenty two to fiscal year thirty three, we are achieving seven million dollars of savings each year and then finally ending with over one and a half million dollars in savings each year after that through fiscal year twenty forty eight. Now on the next page, PDF page twenty four, I'm gonna turn over to our second transaction, which was a required remarketing transaction that we priced the day after the refinancing transaction that I just shared with you. In fact, this is the first time where we priced two consecutive, uh, two transactions on consecutive days because we wanted to enter the financial markets prior to any potential volatility leading up to the U.S. election last November. And we did these all predominantly virtually amidst the pandemic. As mentioned earlier, this is a remarketing of debt. A remarketing is a transaction that enables us to reset interest rates to current market levels once the initial term expires. So we were able to remarket a hundred million of this debt and lock it in at an interest rate of ninety five basis points for a six year period. Previously, this debt had a term of five years and an interest rate of one point three six percent. And this, what this equates to is a forty, forty basis point savings annually or approximately two point four million dollars over this six year period. Turning over to the next page, PDF page twenty five. In summary, we achieved over a hundred and twelve million dollars of gross savings as a result of these two transactions that we will ultimately pass on to our customers. These savings translate approximately up to thirty seven cents per month on our customers' bill, bills during the life of the debt we refinanced. We again would like to thank the board for their continued support of our debt management program. It's the continued focus of the board on cost savings initiatives like this, as well as management's ability to execute on these transactions that result in meaningful savings for our customers. Thank you very much. I will now open it up to any questions.
Any, any questions or comments?
No questions, Chair. Just, uh, a hearty congratulations to the finance team, Gary as well. Um, you know, again, incredible job in saving real cash for our taxpayers. So thank you all very much for what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stringer, this is John Steen. By the way, I noticed you've got the CFA designation, the Chartered Financial Analyst. Um, I know how very difficult that is to obtain. I can't remember. You have to take what, three tests or something or?
That's right. Three, three levels.
And, uh, the people that start, uh, various, uh, what percentage sort of end up being successful through, through, through the program?
Uh, it's a, it's a pretty low percentage. Um, you know, each, you know, each level is about thirty, thirty to forty percent pass rate.
Yeah, it's quite a prestigious distinction. So anyway, we're, we're proud to have you on board. Uh, I just wanna repeat, it, it's something that you said earlier, but this, this intense focus that we've had on cost savings and, and just to, 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 for everybody to think about during the past fifteen years, we've refinanced about four billion of debt to achieve over four hundred and sixty four million of gross debt service savings for the benefit of our customers. I, I, I'm very proud of that and thank you so much for your, your efforts. I know that goes back before you. I don't think you've been with us fifteen years, have you?
No, I haven't. Coming up on, coming up on five years.
It's your time. But anyway, that's just something, uh, we can all be very proud about. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Let's move to, um, agenda item seven, procurement review. A general services context for item eight G two, gas construction services purchase order correction. Mr. Richard Luhon.
Thank you, Chair Steen, and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I am Richard Luhon, Senior Director of Gas Solutions. Thank you for this opportunity today to provide this procurement preview that's related to gas construction services purchase order correction. Moving on to PDF slide thirty. My objectives and takeaways today are to explain circumstances that are associated with past gas construction services contracts and their associated purchase orders. And this includes outstanding invoices that need to be paid, as well as required internal posting corrections for other invoices on these contracts. I'll also explain our invoice validation process and propose corrective and preventative measures going forward. Moving on to PDF thirty one. On my agenda, I'll provide an overview of our gas contractors. I'll provide the background on this purchase, purchase order correction issue. And I'll talk about the outstanding invoices that need to be paid. And I'll talk about prior invoices requiring internal posting correction. Then I'll summarize our next steps. PDF slide thirty two. In September of last year, we presented to the board an overview of our gas construction landscape. And we talked about some notable increases in the demand for gas construction work. Uh, during that presentation, we talked about our gas construction contractors and the important work that they do for us. And this work includes customer growth work, uh, needed infrastructure modernization to help ensure the safety and reliability of our system, and special projects, uh, including work for JBSA and joint bid work with the city of San Antonio, Fair County, and Texaco. Also, during the September meeting, the Board of Trustees approved our new three year contract for a hundred and twenty million. And I wanted to take this opportunity to sincerely thank the board for their prior support. The new contract helped us to consolidate our gas construction activities. And we're managing the procurement closely and it's going well. Moving on to PDF thirty three. The issue that I'm presenting today originated over the course of the three previous construction contracts. There was value on early purchase orders of these contracts that was inadvertently underutilized. We have identified gaps in our administrative procedures for processing completed invoices that resulted in the invoices not being matched to their appropriate purchase orders. This resulted in charges carrying forward to each subsequent contract. So by the time final invoices were received, there wasn't enough invoice value on the last contract to cover these outstanding costs. While there was enough total value on the prior purchase orders combined to cover all outstanding invoices, uh, we must make correcting entries to clean up our prior purchase order records in order to pay our remaining outstanding invoices. Uh, I'd like to point out, uh, that throughout this presentation, when I talk about this rematching issue of invoices, you'll see, uh, the, the, the font is highlighted in blue. And when I'm talking about paying the final invoices, it's highlighted in green. Our CEO has reviewed this matter thoroughly and has endorsed our mitigation plan with her approval. So today, out of an abundance of caution and transparency, I'm here to disclose this issue to you and to humbly and respectfully request your approval as part of today's consent agenda. Moving on to PDF slide thirty four. This is a summary of the three contracts that we utilized prior to the new one. Uh, the three contracts combined totaled seventy point eight nine million dollars. And these three contracts included a prior three year contract, a one year extension of that contract, and a short term, six month bridge contract. Actual charges to these three contracts prior to our outstanding invoices was sixty eight point three three million. The outstanding invoice items to be paid totaled one The outstanding invoice items to be paid totaled $1.43 million. Uh, after these items are addressed, the total overall underspend of these combined contracts will be $1.13 million. Moving on to PDF slide 35. As I mentioned, we need to rematch the invoices to their correct purchase orders in order to process our outstanding amounts due. This table summarizes the actions that we need to be taken in more detail. Uh, the description and contract value are the same as on the previous slide, but here is a breakdown of the initial, initial charges to each contract. The highlighted in the blue box are the invoice corrections that will have to be made. Uh, these are our POs that will be reclassed from one purchase order to a previous one, or one contract to a previous contract. So you'll see that $2.44 million will be moved from the six-month bridge and the one-year extension back to the three-year contract. Uh, $936,000 will be moved off of the bridge onto the one-year extension, and the final six-month bridge, there will remain $3.39 million. The items in the green box summarize the remaining invoices to be paid on two of the contracts. There's $332,000 on the one-year extension and $1.97 million on the six-month, month bridge. The final column summarizes the total overall, over, excuse me, the total over and underspend that will remain on these contracts after we make the corrections. While there was, uh, while the one-year extension contract was undersized by about $1.3 million, overall, as discussed, there was more than enough capacity on these contracts to cover all of these invoices. Uh, in, further in the presentation, I'll be talking about, uh, the, the changes that we, will be made to our future process. Today's approval on the consent agenda will grant us the authority to make adjustments to the spending limits of the appropriate contract purchase orders and make the appropriate changes to our PO records, and this will allow us to pay our outstanding invoices. PDF slide 36. A, a little bit more on the rematch and, and the approach that we took to evaluate our invoices on our prior contracts. Uh, we went back and, and reviewed, uh, these invoices and compared them to, uh, the purchase orders where, where they were charged. Uh, and we determined that there were, that there were gaps in our administrative invoice processing of completed invoices, uh, where the invoices were not matched to the appropriate purchase orders. This caused subsequent contracts to have additional charges incorrectly carried over from their previous contracts. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, some of the earliest purchase orders were not fully utilized. Uh, we left value on these contracts inadvertently. And this, this, uh, posting activity needs to be corrected. Moving on to PDF slide 37. We also reviewed our outstanding invoices. Uh, we worked closely with the audit services team. Uh, the team was led by Matt Mills, Vice President of Audit Services, uh, and they conducted an internal assessment of all of the outstanding invoices totaling $1.43 million. The team worked to verify that the charges were properly supported and didn't have any material errors, although we are, uh, going to need to make minor adjustments, uh, to some of the outstanding invoices. PDF slide 38. In examining this issue, we worked closely with a, a very strong cross-functional team from across the company to identify, uh, opportunities for improvement. Uh, as a result, we are, uh, enhancing our forecasting tools and updating our approach to creating better purchase order estimates. In addition, we've refreshed our leadership systems. We've reinforced management accountability requirements. Uh, we're also, uh, readdressing the way we handle transitions in leadership as well as transfer of knowledge. We're refreshing our supply chain and financial services training, uh, for everyone included. Uh, we're also, we've also provided our, our gas executive team with extensive internal controls training. On the issue of internal controls, we're reviewing, uh, our internal controls environment in detail, including the standardization and the timing of our invoice, uh, procedures. And moving forward, we will continue to utilize our, our process improvement methodology to evaluate our procedures, uh, and, and, and ensure, uh, that their accuracy. PDF slide 39. As part of today's consent agenda, uh, we, we, I'm here today to humbly and respectfully request your authority not to exceed $1.5 million to pay all of our outstanding invoices. Uh, we're also committing to correcting our postings to our, uh, prior gas construction, uh, contract purchase orders to ensure that our records are materially accurate. PDF slide 40. And this concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Luhon?
Yes, um, it's been a while. So a, a couple of questions. One, who are the vendors?
Um, um, who is this speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Trustee Gonzalez. I, I guess I, one.
Go ahead.
What was your, I think I understand basically from a H鈴 perspective, what was the original period of performance? I need to know, who are the contractors? And then, more importantly, how did this happen? And then, um, yeah, I mean, I don't even know who we're authorizing this for, what companies that affects. Um, and then do we have any outstanding, other than what was discussed, do we have any other outstanding accounts payable due to these organizations? I know it's a long question there, but I don't remember who these companies are. And then I guess, what is a current purchase order process and are vendors trained? In most cases, vendors follow our process, and usually there's modification process, there's a mod before you can proceed, there's a mod, if there's a period of performance ending. But I guess I'm a little baffled how we got here. So if anybody can tackle that would be nice.
Y- yes, ma'am. So, uh, as I mentioned, um, early in the, in, in, I think it was slide seven of the presentation, uh, when we started these multi-year contracts, uh, we underutilized, uh, the, the PO values in those first contracts. Uh, additionally, there were some, some gaps in, in how we matched the, the completed invoices to, uh, the appropriate purchase order where they originated on. Uh, so as a result, we carried charges forward onto each new contract. So when we got to the end.
Look, hold on, Rich, Richard, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
So what you're saying, the first thing was that the contract ceiling, right? So you, you issued a purchase order with a contract ceiling amount to vendor A, correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am, to multiple vendors, yes, ma'am.
Right, but for the sake of conversation here, so first, our CPS, uh, issued a, a purchase order with a ceiling dollar amount for the, for, for the period of performance. Then the second thing you're telling me is that you, which is a good thing, you don't always want to spend all the money on a purchase order, right? So then what you're saying is that when someone, someone realized that the original purchase order ceiling value was not utilized, so then additional task orders were added. And we didn't update the, the contract or the mod? Is, is that what happened? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm going to jump in a bit. You're, you're almost there. So you're right, we left value on those. Then when we got the approval to move forward on the subsequent POs, it was the same type of work, and so it was, um, incorrectly applied to the new PO. So that value just stayed out there. And so they didn't, they didn't add it to the old. It was unused in the beginning, and then they just picked up the new invoice. So it was just a, they weren't looking at the details correctly. They should have gone back to the old PO.
Right. They should have gone back, and they should have either redefined scope, or they should have just added a modification saying, we extend the period of performance, or we expand the scope of work within the original co, uh, uh, se, uh, purchase order, right, the ceiling amount, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, only because I live doing this on my end, so I'm very familiar with, uh, that type of, uh, contract. Okay, so, so what we're reading as right now, and again, I kind of go back to, I, I understand what took place. Uh, what I understand is there's, am I correct to say that even with this, we're still exceeding the original ceiling amount? Regardless of the issue?
Look at all the, if you look, if you look at all the authorized amounts, we are not. But when you look at the individual.
Okay, that, that was important to me. That's what's not quite clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, okay, so that is one, one thing I want to know. I don't want to have to exceed the original, uh, ceiling amount because depending on the contract type, if it was from fixed price versus timely material, that makes a big difference, right? So I, if I understand how it took place, and then number two, that we're not exceeding the original budget we had, uh, supported as trustees, and then, um, I still see that we have a certain amount, I think, right, that's still not expended, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is a 1.12? Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Can I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, so if, what, what should have happened, to your point, we, if we had gotten them all reclassed, you're exactly right, we would have gone back to earlier, uh, earlier contracts and amended them and asked for approval to amend. But we left that, so when you add all the individual ones up, we underspent in the total, but it was messy by year. So I, I didn't want to make you think that we didn't have any issues. It was messy by year, we should have been a lot more on top of it, but if you look at all the authorizations that we had, it all fits underneath there. And, and now we're going to need to go back and get it all corrected. But so, but the total that was authorized were good, but within there, we were over on some and under on others.
So let me ask you this, are the vendors expecting? Have we asked them to submit? Like typically what we do on my end, like when I'm required, I do like a project closeout. And so some of the questions we're asked to do is, please look at your, your contract, make sure there's no open invoices before we do a project closeout. So have we asked our vendors to kind of evaluate where we're at? Because the last thing that we want is also for them to come back to us and say, well, no, you actually owe me more money. So have we done that on our end?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
And so that's been reconciled?
Uh, yes, ma'am, with the outstanding invoices, uh, it has been reconciled, that's correct.
And they've already signed off, and we, we shouldn't expect them coming back to us in 30 days, or 60 days, or a year from now stating that, hey, by the way, we messed up.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we've, we've reviewed these, uh, invoices thoroughly.
Well, have they signed something? Have they signed like a project closeout or something that indicates that? Once you've said you've reconciled, we don't owe you anything outside of what we've discussed or agreed to.
Ma'am, they haven't signed anything yet. That's a really good point. So when we make that payment, we'll send a letter with it. So great suggestion.
Yeah, I would even say before you send the letter out with the payment, that they again do like a, again, um, whether, whether you call it project closeout, whether you call, whatever audit, whatever you call it, that they agree to it first, and then we send payment. I think us just telling them we're good is not enough. I would say put the onus on them, um, to ensure that they've done their contract management on their end, and then we would pay out. I wouldn't want to pay out without that in place.
That's a great suggestion, and follow through with that.
And I think those are my only questions, um, and then, um, so I would just require a follow-up to make sure that we added that component, that if we were to approve this today, that it had the caveat that there would be some kind of, um, on the vendor's side, uh, contract, audit, you know, signature on their part, something, I don't know what you want to call it. I don't want to call it a project closeout, because it seems like we still have work in progress, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Richard, I, so that's, yes, go ahead. You, you specifically have gone through the outstanding invoices with, with each one of the vendors, but as far as getting something from writing from them, you can add that step.
Yes, ma'am, we, we will do that.
Yeah. Okay, that, that would be it. Thank you, Richard. Um, I don't know if any of my fellow, uh, trustees have any additional feedback to that.
This is Willie Smackey. At the end of the invoice, when they send an invoice in, are they going to have final payments?
I'm sorry, we broke up a little bit, sir.
When they send this invoice in, uh, us to approve this, will there be a final payment on this autumn?
Well, this was, this resolved all the outstanding items that we have, we have new business now with them, but this will resolve those old contracts.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Are, are there, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Luhon.
I, I do have a question, a, a comment. I know these transactions are taking place, and I don't know how to say this and make it correct, but I'm going to say this. Are our people having the proper training to going out and reviewing this before they turn it into the, uh, accounts payable office or the, and making sure the work is done? Uh, for this reason, I know for a fact that some things have transpired, and the work was being completed, incomplete, and damaged to some property, individuals' property, and they have to pay to get it fixed. So I'm just saying, and I'm, and I know for a fact that we need, make sure that our people are trained to go out and validate things that are out there, done correctly, and turn in, make sure that the receipts are turned in are properly noted and not being overcharged for those two reasons. Damage to a person's property and incomplete properties, a person's property, uh, is still incomplete today. So I just want to make sure that we have people that are following vendors, those vendors have done a horrible job that I see, uh, and I know, not just saying I know. Thank you.
Trustee, Dr. Um, you raised this issue, well, um, and the audit and finance group, so we're going back in to look at our QC, um, activities, and, um, Paul Barham and Chris and, uh, Richard and Fred will be looking at that, and we will get back to you about that issue.
And any other questions or comments? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Um, this would be A.
Do we need to vote on, do we need to vote on the, on this?
No, it's just for discussion.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, sorry about that.
Well, well, wait a minute. It's, it, it was discussion item, but it's contained within the vote we're about to take on the consent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's a good clarification. All right, so the approval of the consent items, it's A, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 11/16/2020, B, minutes of a special board meeting held on 11/16/2020, C, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 12/14/2020, D, payment to the City of San Antonio for December 2020, uh, audit and finance committee, uh, E, audit and finance committee charter update, F, Board of Trustees travel policy, G, procurement items, professional services and general services. So that's the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Kell. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Second by trustee Gonzales.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any, uh, discussion?
Yes, uh, I, I like to discuss item F, uh, board of trustee travel policy. I like to ask the question, have we had any abuse on this policy or something? Uh, I noticed that it came up and I was reviewing it and I was just, you know, I was just a little confused about it. Is it something that I, maybe I'm confused about abuse or something on this policy?
Well, I can answer that. I think it, it represents the policy in place, so it's not a change. And I think it's just a housekeeping, uh, somebody else can jump in, but it's a housekeeping item just to approve the form that we've been using. And another way of saying it's a formality to approve the form we've been using.
Oh, is this the first time we've ever approved this form?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Of course I know, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. We put it in to try to work out the details and we have not seen any abuse. It seems to be a good process, but we never asked the board to approve it. And we can make changes later though, if, if we just find out that there's something that we've missed.
Uh, any other, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say, uh, well, let's call the roll. Ms. Schellman?
Yes, sir. Um, just a moment. Uh, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Tierstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we'll move to agenda item nine, which is the executive session. And Ms. Schellman, would you go ahead and take us into the executive session? And I think you're going to make the charge pretty broad, correct? So, so, uh, possibly we could discuss this, this competitive matter issue that's been raised.
Yes, sir. And, um, we were planning to discuss competitive matters anyway. But at this point, the board will move into closed session pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas government code for a number of matters, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under section 551.071, deliberations regarding real property under section 551.072, perspect- prospective gifts or donations under section 551.073, personnel under section 551.074, security personnel or devices under section 551.076, economic development negotiations under 551.087, competitive matters under section 551.086, or security audit and devices under section 551.089 in Texas government code 481.183, F as in Frank. Um, it is, let me see what time, 3:34. And, um, the board will, at the close of executive session, come back into open session.
Um, thank you, Ms. Schellman. Do, do we want to try to, to, uh, allow for a little break here? Would anybody want that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So why don't we, uh-
Even if it's, even if it's five minutes, five minutes is five minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, so at 3:34, then why don't we convene at 3:45 in the executive session? Is that, is that all?
Thank you.
Okay.
That sounds fun. Thank you.
All right.
The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session, please stand by, the open meeting will resume shortly.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
The CPS Energy Board of Trustees is returning from executive session. Chair Steen, the trustees are back in the meeting.
All right. Ms. Schellman, are you on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Would you bring us back into open session, please?
Yes, sir. Would you like for me to call the Rogers to confirm the quorum?
Yes.
All right. Chair Steen?
Here.
Dr. Mackey? Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Merenberg?
Here.
For the record, the board has now concluded its closed session and has returned to open session. It is 4:48 p.m. During the closed session, the board discussed only the matters that were noticed for executive session and no others. There were no votes taken, no other matters were discussed. So the board is ready to resume its open session.
All right. Let's move to Agenda Item 10. And that's a personnel committee meeting that was held on 12/17/20. And Mr. Kelly, you've got the option to read that report, your report on that meeting, or you could just ask that it be inserted into the record. What's your desire?
I would like it be inserted into the record.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll do that. Let's move to Agenda Item 11, Board Officers. And this is a voting item. And this is Mr. Kelly, Chair of the Nominations Committee.
Thank you. The Nominations Committee had an informal meeting back in November of last year. And the main purpose of our meeting was the election of a new board chair and vice chair with the fiscal year beginning February 1 of 2021. We intend to elect a new chair and vice chair for two-year terms that begin with the new fiscal year. And so that was the item that we would be discussing again with the new term to begin February 1, 2021. First, let me say that Chairman John Steen, in my opinion, has done an incredible job with the board chair position. And we're very fortunate to have had him serve during this period. Also, we're pleased to say that he recently was appointed to serve a second five-year term on the board. And so we will have his wise counsel input and outstanding executive abilities for another five years. Chairman Steen, I know you had to come through a very difficult year. None of us have lived through a pandemic before, and it required some real pivoting. And it required some real pivoting on your part to move us out of regular face-to-face meetings to electronic meetings and telephonic meetings. It cut down on the ability for us to meet face-to-face as board members and deal with issues. It created, of course, huge operational challenges for the company. And I know you stayed very close in working with our outstanding CEO, Paula Gold Williams, during this very difficult period. So, I would have to say that you have chaired the board during a time that probably no other chairman, at least in recent history of this company, has had to navigate. And yet, you did it with grace, maturity, organization, and an awful lot of passion. So, I want to thank you, Chair Steen, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the company for the outstanding work that you performed the last three years as our Board Chair. We are very fortunate to also have though, what I would call, an extremely strong bench in our board. And so, we have worked with Dr. Mackey as our Vice Chair over the past year. And Dr. Mackey, again, has been very, very solid in his work for the board. And I, he has positioned himself to where he is totally ready and prepared to be our new chairman, beginning February the 1st. Also, as our Vice Chair, Trustee Janie Gonzalez has also been an outstanding part of our committee. She has been a fresh injection of innovation and vigor and youth and exuberance to our board and has really, really added value to all we're doing. So, all of that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend that effective February 1, that Dr. Mackey accepted or assumed the position as Chairman and Trustee Janie Gonzalez assumed the position of Vice Chairman of the Board going forward at that point. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Kelly. And thank you for those kind words. I, I, I've really enjoyed working with all of you all. And it's been a, it's been a really great experience. Now, I'm the other member. We talked about earlier that there can only be two of us on the nominee, on a committee. And I'm the other member of the Nominations Committee. So, I'll do something which is a little bit out of the ordinary because I'm the Chair, but I'd like to second your motion as the other member of the nominating committee.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any comments from any of the board members before we take a vote?
Yes. Chairman Kelly, Chairman Steen, I did want to make a couple of comments. First of all, John, thank you so much for your stewardship of this board. There's been difficult times throughout this entire process of the pandemic. But to layer on top of that extraordinary transitions that are going on in our industry and the stewardship of this important public asset, I want to thank you for your openness, your dialogue, and, and, you know, your, your persistence about getting things right. And, and I do appreciate that. I also am, am very grateful for Dr. Mackey for stepping up as a board member to begin with and certainly excited about his tenure to begin now as Chair. And so, to you and to Vice Chair Gonzalez, I'm greatly looking forward to working with you. And I wish you the best. We'll be walking with you the entire way. And, and let's go get some things done.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Willis Mackey. I want to thank you for your outstanding leadership and your guidance for the past three years. I've looked, listened, and learned and a lot from your leadership and your guidance. And all the things that you've done has been for the best interest of this company. And one of the biggest things is keeping us on time with our board meetings. I want to thank you for everything that you've done. And, and I'd like to say what a privilege it is to be nominated for Chair by this board. And I, I will need your guidance, your leadership, and to continue to press forward to do the best that we can for this outstanding company. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Mackey, very much. You're putting some pressure on me about the, the board meeting because we're running behind today on our time. But anyway, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the Secretary to call for the vote?
Yes, yes, please.
Carolyn?
All right. Yes, I'm here. Let me find the place I'm going to record it. Okay. I'm going to call the members who are not nominated here and proceed from there. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Chair Steen?
Yes.
And Dr. Mackey, are you in support of, trying to vote for yourself? Are you certainly in support of the slate that has been recommended?
Yes.
And Trustee Gonzalez, the same way. Delighted to have you join the board as an officer. Are you supportive of the slate as recommended?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I pushed the knee button accidentally. Yes.
Then it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Mr. Steen, Chair Steen, could I interrupt? I need to correct something I said before, before we go on to something else. Do you mind? When I brought the board back into open session, I reported what we had discussed in executive session. And there was, in fact, a vote taken because we did discuss a competitive matter. And under Texas statute, the board is permitted to vote, deliberate and vote on competitive, competitive matters in closed session. And so, there was one vote taken on that one competitive matter. And I just wanted to make the record clear for that.
Good, thank you.
As opposed to missing it.
That, that's so noted. All right. Let's move to Agenda Item 12, which is Recommendation Regarding President and CEO Performance and Contract Discussion and Possible Vote. And that's Mr. Kelly as Chair of the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Steen. And yes, as you all know, we're very, very fortunate to have Paula Gold Williams as our CEO. And I would make some of the same comments about her that I made about you, Chairman Steen, that she has had to navigate us through an extraordinary year of change and challenge. In my opinion, and I think in the opinion of anybody that follows the company closely, she has done an extraordinary job of doing that. But as I, in my role as Chairman of the Personnel Committee, I came to realize that her employment contract is expiring at the end of this month. And I know it is certainly my intention. And I cannot imagine anybody that wouldn't totally agree with this, that we, we very much want to keep her here and extend her contract. On the other hand, we are caught in this very, very difficult year. It's hard for us to meet personally. It's hard for us to meet with our consultants to measure performance. And so, rather than totally renewing her contract at this point, what we would like to do to give her the assurance of how much we want to keep her and how much we intend to get with her and continue to negotiate anything that is reasonable in her contract, we would like to, I, on behalf of the Personnel Committee, we are recommending that we extend her current contract by up to 24 months. This will allow us to hopefully get some, if not most, of the pandemic behind us, to get a whole lot more clarity in terms of what we have been able to accomplish as a company in fiscal year '21 that will end at the end of this month, set some realistic targets for fiscal '22 by working with our consultants and others. So, the fact that we are asking for a renewal of up to 24 months, I want to stress as much as I possibly can, this in no way is saying that we do not want a long-term contract with our CEO. We simply need some time to go through this very, very different, difficult, historic year and, and negotiate a contract that is fair to both parties. But we need time to do that. So, all of that being said, it is the recommendation of the Personnel Committee that we extend her current contract by up to 24 months.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So, and that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor. No, I'll give you the distinct pleasure of doing that. I will.
I was just, I was waiting to see if there was. But no, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to make that motion.
Oh, Mayor, so Ed, I think Ed made the report and the motion. So, you would be seconded if?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm very happy to make the second.
Good, good. Okay. So, it's, there's, there's a motion and a second. Discussion, please.
Yes.
Well, I'll start it off by saying.
Chairman?
No, you go ahead, Dr. Mackey.
Okay, go ahead. I, I would like to say that Ms. Gold Williams has done an outstanding job leading this company. When I look at all the, the finances that she's kept up and, and has been on top of and her leadership ability to provide the core of our company, the reliability and all the things that she's helped to lead and guide with her executive team, I think it's just been outstanding. And I am pleased to see her getting a two-year extension. And for her to know that we're, we support her and want her to continue to lead in this company. And, and I just want to thank her for doing an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Mr. Kelly, were you going to, who was going to say something? Mayor?
Yeah, sure. Well, I, I would just echo the comments. You know, Paula is an extraordinary talent. And it's been a pleasure to speak with her on, on panels and, and see her representing our community and our utility at a national level with some of the industry's most recognized people, including, you know, Secretaries of, of Energy. That shouldn't be lost on folks that we have someone who represents the future of the industry, running our public asset here in San Antonio. And I, I think that's a good thing for taxpayers. It's a good thing for, for those who are interested in, in a further evolution of what we're, we're doing here. And it certainly is, is a point of pride that we have, you know, a, a product of San Antonio from our very own San Antonio Public Schools, leading the largest energy utility in the country. And Paula's done an extraordinary job navigating this pandemic and, and even before that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to her continued leadership of CPS.
Good. Mr. Kelly or Ms. Gonzalez?
It would be me, and I'm sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
What can I say? I'll start with Paula has been relentless in communicating CPS Energy Transformation significance. Modeling the desired changes has built a strong top team and getting personally involved that I've been a witness to all of this. This requires extraordinary energy, especially what we've experienced this past year. Employees must fundamentally rethink and reshape the business while continuing to run it day to day. There should be no illusion, this transformation always triggers conflict. I have personally witnessed as she pushes forward under several levels of expectation. Whether there's a new CEO or not, the question will remain the same of anyone. We hire support. The CEO will need the full backing from the board, our city mayor, city council, and constituents with the expectations of operational excellence, judiciary responsibility, and transparency. So, I fully support the extension of Paula's contract.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. You know, I'm, I'm reflecting on, on, on how very proud we are of Paula Gold Williams. And I'm just reminding everybody, she was, she was born at Lackland Air Force Base, graduated from Sam Houston High School, SAC, and Saint Mary's University. And she's a wonderful example of a, of a native San Antonio who's hit it out of the park career-wise. And in every way, she, she merits the, the many accolades and honors she's received. And if I had to summarize it, I'd say that she's, her performance has been extraordinary under the most challenging of circumstances. And I, I don't know if I've ever seen someone that's so devoted to her job and what I would call the 3100 members of her CPS Energy family. She, she works long, long days. Most weekends, she's working. She is totally devoted to making CPS Energy a success, and it, and it shows in every way. So, anyway, Paula Gold Williams, we're, we're proud of you. And I'm proud to, to support this extension.
Thank you, Chairman Steen. Again, on behalf of the Personnel Committee, this comes in the way of a recommendation. I would just say again that I agree with everything that has been said. The thing that I'm going to brag a little bit about is that I had the opportunity to chair the nominating committee a little over five years ago when we recommended Paula for this position. And it really feels good to see that she has done such an extraordinary, extraordinary job. So, I couldn't be more proud of her and the ability to work with her. So, I do place this in nomination that we extend her contract up to 24 months.
Good. Let's go ahead and call the robe then, Ms. Schellman.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Chair Steen?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. That takes care of Agenda Item 12. So, we've got four more agenda items, and it's about 5 o'clock. Ms. Gold Williams, did you, did you tell me that, that possibly we could defer nuclear decommissioning trust investment manager contracts? Could we defer that?
Um, I, unfortunately, I did. I think I'm going to switch it if you don't mind, sir. I'd like to defer Items 15 and 16. The Rate Advisory Committee meeting did, did take place on the, on the 22nd last Friday. We were just trying to put an extra emphasis. So, if we can push 15 and 16, everyone else will try to move quickly.
All right. So, then let's, hearing, hearing no objection, let's move to Agenda Item 13, Nuclear, Nuclear Decommissioning Trust Investment Manager Contracts. And that's Mr. Domingo Villarreal.
Thank you, Chair Steen, Board of Trustees. I'll do my best to be thorough, yet swift. So, I am going to turn you to PDF number 96. Today, I'll be providing the board a refresher of why we have our Nuclear Decommissioning Trusts or our NDTs, talk to you about the investment manager contract process, and ultimately come to you with a request for approval. Turning to PDF 97. The agenda follows the same conceptually as the objectives and takeaways. So, I'll go ahead and move into the substance of the presentation. So, turn with me to PDF number 98, please. So, before I dive into the actual request, I want to provide a bit of context surrounding the various portfolios that the Investment Management Division oversees. The table you see here provides you with a summary of the key components of all of the portfolios. They're all constructed with different objectives and strategies in mind. There are Direct Investments portfolio and the REIT portfolios have a short-term horizon, while the NDTs and the Benefit Trust portfolios, Employee Benefit Trust portfolios have longer-term horizons. So, as such, they're managed differently. And by that, I mean whether they're managed internally or externally. Further, they hold different asset classes based on their growth and return expectations. So, today, we're going to be focusing on the NDTs. But the main takeaway here is that each portfolio is unique in composition and strategic objectives. So, this leads me to PDF number 99. To provide a little context, we're the original partners with a 28% interest in SDP or South Texas Project back in the late 80s when the Texas Project, back in the late 80s when the nuclear units came online. This represents our original investments, but we purchased an additional 12% in 2005 and now have 40% ownership. So you're really gonna hear me just simply refer to them as the NDTs collectively. We had a cost study done in 2019, and it was determined that we were in an overfunded position. So that indicates that our assets have grown steadily enough for the most part, and we're where we need to be to fully cover decommissioning costs when the units are retired. Turning to PDF 100, I'll briefly touch on this slide just to show you the individual and the aggregate market values of the NDTs as of last quarter. The total market value is about $660 million. Here I'd like to highlight that we have around a 64% target of our holdings in six income investments, which are seen as some of the lower-risk investments in the capital markets compared to other asset classes. Again, this goes back to because the trusts are beneficially overfunded, as I stated in the previous slide. We really focus on the preservation of principal. We want to continue to see growth that's steady, but not necessarily significant. Moving to PDF number 101, we understand the value of diversification, not only from an investment management perspective, but from a firm composition point of view. So we periodically assess our active and passive managers versus our diverse and non-diverse mix of both portfolios, and the current allocations are shown on the tables in this slide. So again, I'll stress again that the objective here is consistent growth as we maintain our asset allocation mix, in consideration for the strategy and type of firm is given as we evaluate our investment manager mix. Let's turn to PDF number 102, please. So this slide illustrates the items that we present to the Board of Trustees periodically, whether they're informational or they are for approval purposes. Today, we're here to request approval for new, for two newly proposed Investment Manager contracts we would like to initiate, and that's where you can see the green boxes highlighted at the top of the slide. The other deliverables are just there simply for reference. Turning to PDF 103, I will spend a bit of time on this slide, it's pretty important, just to give you a bit of background on the underperforming investment managers. Lazard Asset Management and Dimensional Fund Advisors, or DFA, manage about $40 million between the two trusts. We have tracked their underperformance and given them ample time to improve, but as their strategy continued to lag the benchmark, and we didn't see improvements in the current COVID environment, we felt it was appropriate to search for more value in the investment manager universe for these two particular asset classes. Um, I'm not gonna go over each of the returns versus the benchmarks, but you can see that since inception and over a one-year period, they've lagged their respective benchmarks. Because of that, that's why we want to propose moving forward with replacing them. But I'd like to leave this slide on a positive note. Um, please note that both of these investment managers have provided positive returns for the portfolios since inception. Lazard has provided a return of 5.3% since we brought the mandate and managed our assets, and DFA has brought us 6.4% return, which is still very good. If they've made money for us, we're just proposing we move in a different direction due to their continued underperformance to their respective benchmarks. So this leads me to PDF number 104, please. So we want to look for investment managers who are exceeding the benchmark. So as is normal protocol, our Nuclear Decommissioning Trust Investment Committee, which is comprised of our treasurer, our assistant treasurers, financial sneeze, and other internal stakeholders, got with Mercer Investment Consultants to proceed with finding candidates for us to interview. So Mercer starts off with hundreds of companies, and they basically narrow it down to a shortlist that they provide us for consideration. Their initial search includes active and passive options, as well as diverse and non-diverse firms. At this point in the process is when we actually conduct the interviews, and this leads me to my, our recommendation on PDF number 105. So we're ultimately proposing that we have State Street, which is a passive fund, and William Blair, an active manager, to replace DFA and Lazard respectively. As we replace these investment managers, we do look for diverse firms, but State Street nor William Blair diverse, but please note that we're actually maintaining our diverse mix and not decreasing this allocation at all. We are actually increasing our allocation to passive investments, which, as you're aware, Paula's a specific index. So I'm gonna move on to PDF number 106 to focus on some of the highlights of the firms that we're recommending. So as I mentioned, State Street is a passive fund, which allows us to probably get returns which are consistent with their respective index. By doing this, we're de-risking the market because this particular fund is gonna follow the Russell 2000 Index, which has returned about 7% over the last seven years and 10% over the last 10 years. By also using a passive manager, we're reducing administrative fees in the form of expenses related to the funds that we paid to investment manager. State Street's funds are less than what we're actually paying DFA right now. Now moving on to William Blair, as I mentioned before, they're an active manager. Um, however, we provide, we believe that they provide stronger return potential. What I mean here is William Blair's returned over 8.4% over the last five years, so they have very much so outperformed their respective index over historical periods. We also feel like they provide us downside protection. By that I mean, in looking at their performance historically, they performed well in down markets, meaning they're not losing as much money as the benchmark. And lastly, we feel that they provided, that their growth tilt approach balances well with another investment manager's value tilt, so we feel like this particular fund will be complementary to our existing international equities portfolio. This leads me to my request on PDF number 107. So as we're bound to our investment policy, the Texas Public Funds Investment Act to get approved approval for any new agreements, we're respectfully requesting the approval of resolution to execute the agreements with State Street and William Blair. This concludes my presentation. Without a look ahead up to any questions, and I thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Thank you very much. What are your questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Trustee Kelly. Uh, I have two things to say to Mr. Villarreal. Number one, I want to congratulate he and his team for maintaining an overfunded position for the account that is very difficult to do, particularly in the volatile investment market that we've been operating in for some time, so congratulations on doing that. Secondly, um, I want to congratulate he and his team for writing heard on our investment managers. Uh, there is a tendency to put the managers in place and then just kind of forget about it, uh, and yet he and his team are actively managing the managers, and that's the way it should be done, and I congratulate him on that, and I'm sure they have come up with a couple of very good recommendations here, and so that being said, uh, I would like to move that we approve, uh, his recommendations.
Thank you. That's a motion from Mr. Kelly. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
And is there a second from Dr. Mackey? Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, yes, I had a couple of questions. I, I don't, I'm in favor of moving, but I do, I do have questions. What, what is the cost to moving? What are the fees we're gonna pay? And then I noticed on Slide 8, the frequency of requests, every five years, I'm assuming is this request, or is this? If you can clarify the frequency of this request. Is it gonna be every two years?
Sure, Trustee Gonzalez. So I'll, I'll start off with your first question. So with regard to fees, we will be paying less by moving from DFA to the passive fund with State Street. On the other hand, going from Lazard to William Blair, we'll be paying a slightly higher fee, but again, we feel that this fee is worth it due to their historical outperformance of their respective benchmark. Now addressing your second question.
Right.
So addressing your second, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, go ahead, address the second question, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, so if you go back to Slide 8, or PDF 102, the green box that I have highlighted at the top, that's NDTIM contracts, those are the contracts that we are seeking approval of. We are bound by the PFI and our investment policy to come to, come to the board with these requests at a minimum every two years. But if, if we are in kind of an off-cycle, which we are now, where we want to strategically make a shift in our investment managers, we do it more frequently.
Okay. Well, that's good. Um, then I, then I'm in full support of it. I guess later on if we can readdress the frequency of trust to RFP results every five years, and then the NDT cost study every five years. I don't think, I don't wanna take away focus from what you're trying to accomplish, that's something I would like to further discuss on a later time.
We'll make note of it. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Villarreal, this is John Steen. Um, so, uh, the way to think about this, we're, we're putting this money aside because someday we'll have to decommission SDP 1 and 2, which are, which are nuclear, nuclear units, and, um, that's, that's off in the future. I don't know if, you know offhand what the dates are that we're looking at for those decommissions?
Uh, yes, sir. So, so as of right now, they're set to retire in the 2048 timeframe. But at this point, there is a possibility that an extension could be requested, just as it was a few years ago when the life of the plants were extended from 2028 to 2048.
Right. So if we, if we end up there and we're, we're in an overfunded position at that point, what happens to the, uh, the, the additional funds? Where, where do they go?
So, so at that point, we would have to petition with the PUCT for customer refunds. Um, they would work slightly differently between the two trusts because they're bound by slightly different requirements, but, um, initially, any excess funds would be handled in accordance with whatever the PUCT deems, uh, deems appropriate.
But, but the, but, but I thought, I, I was, I thought I was told that, that if we ended up, uh, uh, with, with additional funds, that, that, that those would go back to our customers? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Okay, I think we've got a motion and a second. Am I, am I correct, Ms. Schelman? It's a long day.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Any further discussion?
She ready for me to call the roll?
Uh, yeah, i- unless there's any further questions or comments or discussion, no? Okay, yeah, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Chair Steen?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. Appreciate it. All right, so this is, this will be the last item on the agenda. Um, this is gonna be Paul Barm, and Paul, we're, we're trying to make 5:30 here, I don't know if that's possible, but anyway, I, I know you're down to 50 minutes, but if you could do Item 14, Benefit Plan Funding and Expense.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Steen and Board. I will, uh, do my best to run through this quickly, uh, so if you will turn with me to, uh, PDF, uh, Slide 115. Uh, just quickly, the, the bottom line of this presentation is ultimately seeking approval of the funding expense for fiscal year 2022 that we're about to begin. Uh, so, you can, uh, agenda on Slide 116, uh, again, we'll be asking for that, uh, approval. On Slide 117 of your PDF deck, uh, just real quickly, this probably goes without saying, but the, our benefit plans are really critical, uh, for our employees, and that includes life, disability, health, and pension. There's trusts for each of those, um, and, uh, these are, as Paula referred to, the 3100 employees, they are really the backbone of managing this really critical and complex, uh, business, and, uh, this allows them to, and supports them in doing that, as well as protecting our investments in, in those employees. Uh, so if we can move to Slide number 118 of the PDF deck, um, I won't go through all these bullets, but, uh, you know, the, there, there is a lot of work done in the background, uh, to oversee these trusts, uh, between the Administrative Committee, uh, full-time benefit staff, uh, a, a number of supporting consultants, and all that with, uh, the very, um, uh, critical input and oversight from our EBOC Committee, uh, who have been, uh, really doing a good job of giving us, uh, a lot of good, uh, feedback and guidance, uh, as we look to continue to improve the oversight and management of this, uh, of these trusts. Uh, if you can go with me to PDF Slide number 119. These two charts really just show, uh, two high-level, um, indicators of, uh, you know, historical investment performance. On the left-hand side is the calendar year returns, uh, and you can see, uh, on a three-year basis, five years, 10 years, uh, as well as since inception, uh, for all those periods, we have exceeded the, uh, seven and a quarter, um, actuarial rate of return assumption. And, uh, then on the right-hand side, uh, you can see, uh, for, uh, the, uh, I think we're showing the pension funded ratio here, which is the, the largest of the trusts, uh, which, uh, relatively speaking, is, um, uh, pretty well-funded, uh, with, uh, averaging over 80% and, uh, four of the five last years, um, being, uh, in excess of 80% funded ratio, uh, which is, which is good, uh, in comparison to a lot of the plans out there. If you can go with me to PDF Slide number 120, this is one, uh, uh, kind of a different look at the investment performance, and this is on a, on annual basis, and this is a look at, uh, fiscal year, uh, performance. So the, uh, performance of the plans, uh, from an accounting perspective is, uh, taken on, uh, January 31st of the, each year, and this shows, uh, those numbers for the past five years, and you can see, uh, uh, looking at it on an annual basis, uh, pretty volatile, uh, with, uh, some years being at or, uh, below zero, but other years being well above our assumption, and, uh, which overall gives us, uh, uh, returns that are in excess of our actuarial rate of return. Uh, I would also point out that, um, if we look at the year that, uh, the fiscal year that ended, uh, on January 31st, 2020, um, we did have outperformance, and that does, um, have beneficial impacts, uh, to the, uh, funding expense in years going forward. If, uh, you can turn with me to PDF Slide number 121, uh, which is a statement of, uh, what, what we're doing here is, uh, per our Statement of Governance, uh, for the, uh, benefit trusts, uh, each year we have to obtain board approval for the funding expense for the, uh, benefit year that begins on February 1st. And, uh, typically, this is done as part of the budget review and approval process, but as, uh, as Gary was talking about earlier, uh, that, uh, the full budget, uh, is being bumped back a bit, but, uh, to support our benefit plans and our, our Statement of Governance, uh, we need to go ahead and, and get approval for the funding expense, um, for the benefit plans, um, uh, before the February 1 date. If you will turn with me to PDF Slide number 122, um, here's the numbers that we're actually, uh, going to ask for approval of. The, um, uh, the, the items in the green box, uh, so we have the FY 2022 cash funding, uh, this is just the employers piece, uh, 105, uh, .5 million, and then in, uh, column A, we have the, um, uh, what we're referring to is the preliminary, uh, O&M expense for FY 2022. In column B, we have, uh, the, uh, O&M expenses from '21, and you will notice that, um, the expenses are actually down from, uh, from last year, which, uh, for, uh, when you think about the cost of benefits, that's, um, I think, uh, speaks well of the, of the management of- that's, I think, speaks well of the management of our costs and expenses. That is due to some good experience that we've had in claims costs over the last year, which has saved us some money, as well as some beneficiary moves in the demographics of our population under the benefit plan. This also does include a conservative estimate for the trust investment performance, which will be adjusted after we get those final results from January 31st here coming up soon. And that will be adjusted in the final budget. So if you'll turn with me to PDF Slide number 123. I would like to request board approval of the 2022 benefit plan expense of 107.3 million and FY '22 employer funding of 105.5 million.
Thank you, Mr. Barnum. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I do have a couple of...
Okay, okay.
Make the motion.
Make the motion. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second, Dr. Mackey. So the motion's Mr. Kelly, second by Dr. Mackey. Go ahead, Mr. Kelly, on discussion.
Yes, just a couple of questions, Paul. I'm curious why you are requesting funding of 105.5 against expenses of 107.3. It looks like you're underfunding by about a million eight, number one. And question number two, this is the employer's side of the ledger. The employee's side, do those monies go in straight to the corpus of the portfolio? Or are there expenses that also go with them? Or, you know, what happens to the employee contributions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kelly. So good question. So the difference between the two, so the cash funding is really an actuarially defined number, and it's developed in alignment with the funding policy. And that's, you know, on a cash basis, when we look at, and as you indicate, there's also employee funding as well as trust funding also that would be in addition to that. For, when we look at the O&M expense side, that is, you know, expenses of a number of types, including some costs of gains and losses and things that are calculated over time. So there's some, I guess, non-cash type of expenses there that will make those two numbers somewhat different. So that was the first question. And then your second question was on the funding, and I, here someone may feel correct me, but I believe that the employee funding, I think, goes directly to the trusts.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so these expenses of the 107.3 or whatever the number is, pretty much all in, and you're offsetting the expenses then pretty much by the company? And then it sounds like the employee contribution then goes into the corpus of the fund, and then I guess any extraordinary investment income would be invested, reinvested. So that provides for the growth of the fund then?
Yes, sir. So to the extent that the investment performance, as you mentioned that, the extent it exceeds the actuarial rate of return, that will end up showing a benefit back to the expenses over, I think, a five-year period? Is that right, Gary?
Yes.
And, or if it underperforms that, then it shows, it detracts from that. But did I answer your question?
Yes, I think so. I know that fund accounting is very complicated.
Yeah.
I also know that your liabilities will be continuing to go up as you retire more people and that type of thing. But, so I'm assuming then that when you do the total actuarial run on this, that your growth in the portfolio is probably coming from two areas. Number one, the employee contributions and investment gains that would be reinvested. And all of that is being offset actuarially against the growth and benefits because of due retirements and aging of the existing requirements, et cetera.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Trustee Gonzalez. Can you go to Slide 5? And can you walk me through how the Employee Benefits Oversight Committee trustees were updated in the continuous monitoring process?
Well, so the EBOC meets with us quarterly, and then there are, you know, occasionally meetings with the members between meetings if there's other things to update. But it's primarily at the quarterly meetings with the EBOC, where there's a number of governance-related items that we report out to them on. And we did, so as far as the funding expense, we did cover that with them last week. But, you know, we, actually in our last meeting, in thinking about monitoring and these efforts, a large part of that presentation was actually from Shannon Hours about a lot of the improvements that we're working on, based on a lot of feedback that we've gotten as we continue to try and drive improved performance and oversight of these trusts.
Paul, Mr. Barnum?
I'm sorry, but that...
Can I...
That quite given answer or anything, but again, I kind of go back to the governance and the roles and responsibility when you say we will be updated. And so I just want to make a point that we're a little bit, I want more of a clear definition of the roles and responsibility of the EBOC Oversight Committee, and then how we as trustees are responsible for that oversight, if it's applicable in this case.
Yes, ma'am. I can definitely provide, you know, an overview of that, those roles. We have a chart that we review at the beginning of each meeting, and we can certainly send that to you, or, you know, whatever level of detail that you would be interested in having on this.
Mr. Barnum, this is John Stein. Yeah. The last time we met, the EBOC met, you went over a number of changes and some pretty substantial things. And I know that we asked you to make sure that you presented all of these to Trustee Gonzalez. Have you not been able to do that yet?
No, sir. We have not.
All right.
And that's why I'm asking that, because again...
Trustee Gonzalez, you're supposed to get a briefing, a pretty thorough briefing, and I think...
Exactly. And we're being asked to support something, and yet that briefing didn't take place.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for that, and we will definitely work to make that happen.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. The commitment was made, I have to talk, we're going to work with Paul, Shannon, and myself. The statement of governance was the primary focus with all those changes in there, as well as the makeup of the administrative committee, which that's on our list. This was a separate item that is required by the government to make sure that we are funding and expensing. It's a matter of making sure that the company is staying up on that obligation. I apologize for any confusion of that. It is on our list to get with you in detail, and we can add this as well, but we're just trying to hit a compliance item. There wasn't a lot of significant change from last year to this year, and we would have put it in the budget, and you would have had a very thorough update on that. However, we're holding the budget a bit because of the receivable challenge that we have. So apologize for the delay. We are coming to do a detailed meeting with you.
No, thank you, Paul. And I understand the technical reason why we're going to vote on this matter today, but just again, I just want to make sure that there's a thorough follow-up. And then I would have missed something in PowerPoint if it wasn't, if it hasn't taken place.
Trustee Gonzalez, as I was sitting through that presentation, I'll go out on a limb, but I think, I'm thinking you'll be pleased, because I know you've been really urging the people involved to take a closer look at some things. So anyway, I'm anxious for you to get that briefing.
I'm good with that. I don't want to delay the vote further. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Go ahead and call the roll, Ms. Shelman.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey? Dr. Mackey, are you there? And are you in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. So that concludes agenda item 14, and I think already said this, but we're going to go ahead and defer unless somebody has an issue with it, but we'll defer to the next, our next meeting, items 15 and 16, in the interest of time. So that brings us to item 17, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We will adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second by Trustee Gonzalez.
And Kelly just beat you. Okay.
At an "i," at an "i." You know, it is, we're very competitive. We both have a... We're good to go.
Any discussion hearing that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.